Counselor.
Sorry. You start over.
I'd like to call the special meeting of the Fraser Town Council to order on January thirtieth. Four eighteen. Yeah. I, we don't have a form yet, but let's do a roll call. Katie Souls.
Louis Gregory.
Eileen Waldo. And I'd like, um, I make the motion to approve the agenda. Can we approve the agenda? Not really.
You.
Okay.
But you can follow.
We will, we will follow the agenda. And we'll start with our first interview of Chris Low. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to take turns asking questions.
Fire away.
Please provide a brief summary of your education and work experience identifying how these would inform your role as line manager.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, now that we are on the record, I did want to credit your staff for handling such a professional process to this point. And uh, tell you how uh, much that's appreciated uh, from the candidate side. And so I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. You know, I come from Lawrence, Kansas where I grew up. Uh, Lawrence, Kansas was the home of the University of Kansas, which has one of the premier local government schools in the nation. One of my undergraduate honors professors was John Nowbandian, who was a professor at the University of Kansas Public Administration Program for years and years and uh, Professor Nowbandian long wanted uh, me to enter into public service. Uh, uh, instead, I, I actually went to law school after I graduated the University of Kansas. Uh, thinking that that would be a uh, a, a career path that would give me more options versus, I mean, my dad's advice was, hey, if you get an MPA and you don't like being a city manager, there's not much else you can do. It turns out that's true for law as well, and I didn't like being a lawyer very much. So I, 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 I actually graduated the University of Kansas, went directly to law school uh, at Marquette University um, and spent three years there. Practiced law for a few years. I met my wife. She was a physician at Northwestern University. She was in med school at the time. Uh, we met and stayed together um, ever since. And uh, that was in, gosh, ninety five. Uh, and so uh, when she graduated and I graduated the same year, we moved to Kansas City to, for her to do her residency. She had a military commitment because that's how she paid for undergrad and, and medical school was with the Army, United States Army. So I practiced law for a couple of years and um, got licensed and was first chair in both state and federal trials and uh, enjoyed that experience not in the least. And uh, I thought I, I really have made a mistake here. Luckily, I was able to, when I got to, so we went to Europe, who was the first place the army sent us was Mannheim, Germany. And while I was in Mannheim, Germany, I couldn't practice law because I couldn't speak German. I hadn't planned on being uh, a lawyer in Germany. So what I ended up doing in the alternative was coaching the basketball team on the high school and substitute teaching.
Chris, I'm going to interrupt you for just a moment. Have you seen the question for asking?
Yeah.
Okay. And you see there's the five minutes.
Yep.
For these first four.
Sure. All right, I'll, I'll get through those pretty quickly. So uh, that's not a problem. Uh, so once uh, once we uh, um, finished there, they sent us to Fort Carson, which was the first time I was in Colorado. Um, so we were in Carson for a few years. While I was in Europe, I got my master's degree in public administration from the University of Maryland through Bowie State. Uh, that's how, that's why I was so long getting to that portion of that question. So uh, my undergrad uh, masters and, and law degree were all uh, kind of uh, sequential. And so uh, I worked for the state for a while and decided that I would uh, get into city management finally. And so we did that. I went and worked my way up as an assistant through Kansas and Missouri and, and back to Colorado. And I've served now two communities in Colorado, two in Missouri and one in Kansas.
Louis, next question.
We're gonna, we have to ask every question there, everybody or can we?
Yep.
Deviate from that.
One question at a time.
I don't understand. Read a sick question if you want. You're making moving forward.
We're supposed to ask similar questions.
Okay. Um. So. Just uh, wanted to understand why you think you'd be fit for this role in Jersey Frasier. Um, I don't know much you know about our, our town and what challenges we have, but um, tell us a little bit about why you think you'd be a, a good, good choice for the town.
Yeah, it's a great question and one that I think everybody has on their mind when people inquire about their community, you know, and why, why us? Because uh, it's an important piece of the puzzle. Um, and, and uh, you know, like I, I've told this several times and instances today throughout the process, but you know, being from Kansas, we visited Colorado to ski for, since I was a, a kid. Both my parents were educators. Uh, and we would come out for spring break usually. And so I've been skiing at Winter Park since I was probably twelve years old, you know, and so uh, so I've become acquainted with that. And then we would come up with our kids when they were very little, when my wife was at Fort Carson. So uh, I've had the opportunity to uh, be in the area. Um, and, and I will say that I've selected small towns to serve my entire community. I think they're better places to live. I think uh, also um, I think that you can have more of an impact in smaller communities. And that's why I always chose, I like smaller towns. I, I'm not a very formal person. Uh, and so small towns just fit my style. I like the people there and I like the lifestyle and I like that you saw folks at the grocery store and, and church and that sort of thing. And and uh, until recently, I would have told you that I thought that that made small towns, that small towns were nicer. Now subsequently learned, that's not always true. Uh, a hard lesson to learn, but um, you know, uh, one of the one of the things that my wife and I didn't do is when we moved back to Colorado Springs, we're essentially living in the same community we had already lived in. And our, our, uh, our desire has always been to get back to the mountains and, and to be able to do that and serve a small community and, and and uh, and be able to fulfill my desire to serve and, and become um, enmeshed in a community. That's why this is an attractive opportunity. And I'm trying to shake time off for.
I'd like to understand what your, what your management style, leadership style is, you know, what? How, how? How are you able to um, be successful in managing a team of employees and um, you know, achieve another, the goals that are
Sure. And John's heard this answer in some form, but, but it's uh, you know, when my background, uh, playing basketball, I played for people that were pretty hard coaching style. And, but the reason why you could always take that hard coaching is because you really cared about you. And so it was never a question. Uh, and so they could be demanding. Um, and so in my mind, you know, that is the first important piece of being a, a leader and a, a, a part of a team is to they have to know that you care about them and that you, and so that you value them, you value all of them. And so you know, how do I go about doing that? I, you know, I think you have to be open, honest, act with integrity, do what you say you're going to do. And be who you are. And uh, and, and that's what I've always tried to do is be as authentic a person as I could be. And uh, that's the only, no, A, I know how to do it and to do the job in the right way. And uh, when people know what you're about, when they believe in you, they know that you care about them. Uh, you know, they'll work hard for you and now you can achieve good things. And so in, in my mind, you know, that's, that's the first important piece of leadership is establishing those relationships. And in fact, if you ask me what my most proudest achievement is in, in city management, it wouldn't be any of the capital improvement projects or capital uh, assets that we've put together in, you know, millions of dollars of projects. It's the people that I met, the friendships that I have. It's true. Uh, those are the people I think of. When I think about my career, I don't think about the library or a city hall renovation. I don't think about those things, but I think about the people that I did those with. And that's what I remember about it. And I think if you have that attitude, people um, they know it and, and they respect it and they appreciate it. And they follow you.
Um, well, since you mentioned that, I, I was curious, is, could you maybe share um, the time where, you know, you weren't successful in doing, being able to accomplish what you were trying to trying to do and um, you know, what you, you know, what you took away from that, what, what you learned from that, you know, not all negative losses or whatever are negative. People should pick up something from that and, and be able to take something away that they can use in the future. Can you share, make an example of something that you were not successful in, in doing and um, maybe why and what you took away from it?
Sure, sure. Well, uh, you know, I inherited a fractured board in the town of Monument, Colorado, that, that um, and there would have been a community issue with a methadone clinic that had been really well publicized and was pretty um, um, uh, divisive. And it's so within three months of taking a job, um, three of the four of the seven council members that hired me were gone, out of office. And then were replaced with a group of folks that had a really anti-city uh, kind of attitude uh, and approach, um, because they felt like the previous way that things had been done was improper and, 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 and so uh, I would say that I, uh, and so I ended up having three mayors in three years and seventeen different council members in, trustees in three years. And I was never fully successful at bringing that group together as I would have liked. I, 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 we never did have a, a group that could develop a cohesive vision. I tried my best. I set up a retreat in the Stanley Hotel in Estes, and we were all going to go up and get some strategic visioning and three council members showed up of our seven and two of them were term limited and we're going to be off the board in, in, in a couple of months. So you know, uh, what I learned from it is, you know, uh, oftentimes uh, as the manager, you know, when, when there are groups in a board that disagree on things, it's, you have to be very careful because you're everyone's advisor. Not to get grouped in with one group or another, even if you don't necessarily have that leaning toward one group or another. You can't even give the perception that, that, that you're involved or that you have an opinion on, on one particular policy question. And so I think that I was never able to convince some of those newer board members that that I wasn't something that they thought I was. And uh, and you know, I think that what I learned from that was, you know, um, it is important, even when you have all kinds of change and even when there's all kinds of division, to always look for ways to bring people together rather than just accept the status quo of kind of division or divisiveness. And so you know, I, I, when I look back over the, the years, the, the, the years there, I'm like, what could I have done better? Now, I've often said this too, that I don't think anybody could have succeeded with that composition and with the, with the situations that faced me. Uh, but you know, would I've gone different methods to try and, and um, serve them better? Yeah. I, I, I think I would um, have tried more avenues to more different um, constituencies to try and heal some of those rifts that were there. Uh, and uh, instead, I kind of was drawn into them as, as often city managers do. And, and that was unfortunate, but I, I don't know. Uh, it certainly wasn't my intent, but uh, it just was a rough situation.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for sharing those.
Okay, so what role should you have? If you're chosen with our community members?
With the community members? Well, the role, I, you know, my, my my example this morning was that you're, you're not the engine, but you're the oil in it, right? You don't do any of the work, really. You're not moving the pistons, you're not uh, the machinery. Uh, you can only be effective at allowing others to do their jobs. And so you know, there's, you have to be the oil and the engine. And that's true both for the operations of the government internally, but also externally in the community. Uh, I think you have to be a person that people feel like they can talk to and approach and is honest and trustworthy and dependable and and uh, and professional. And I think that uh, you have to show in many ways that you do care about the community. And uh, I've often said it, you can't, you can't fake sincerity. Uh, people see through that pretty easily, pretty quickly. So uh, you know, that, that's what I feel the role is to, is to be there to help where you can, to see where you can plug into the community, where your expertise can be valuable and helpful. And find those areas in, in need and, and put your attention to them.
Now we'll go on to research questions. Do you have one, Katie, that you want to read? Not yet, not yet. Then what, what issues are you aware of on your research of Frasier? And how would you approach these issues given what you know?
Well, I guess so this, this morning as well, or I said it at lunch with some of your staff, but uh, you know, every place that I've been, I've ended up walking into situations where we've had lawsuits that were ongoing. And I think the legal background helps in terms of uh, helping um, guide communities through sometimes these difficult decisions that may involve litigation. So um, like that methadone clinic dispute, uh, I, I was able to actually bring a resolution to that case. Um, you know, they wanted something like nine million dollars in mediation and there I'm with the retired chief justice of the Colorado Supreme Court. And I'm like, people don't understand Monument's not actually a very rich city. They look at the community and the homes and they think, oh, this is a very wealthy community. And it is, but the town isn't. The town is tax basis to the west of I twenty-five. And so I said, if you continue, and we've been mediating all day. And I said, if you continue to have these demands of millions of dollars, you have to understand that will, that will bankrupt. We don't make nine million dollars in a year. And uh, you know, I said, so you know, if we're not going to come off that number, then we're done here and you'll have to do what you want. Take your, take your chances at litigation and see if you can win. And so we ended up uh, with Searce, us up on that lawsuit for significantly less than that number. And we were able to kind of get the community back on track for a brief period of time. So that's not the first time I've had all kinds of, you know, when I switched from the log, came in and every city manager hands you HR. As, and because they think you're an employment lawyer, you do the HR and it's something that, it's a difficult area, takes specific expertise. Is, and it's, it's complex, it's ever-changing. And so I know why city managers don't want to do it and why they hire guys like Rob to do it for them. And I never had one. I was always in town, small enough that I was my own HR director, uh, uh, most of the places I was. So they hand you that. And when, with that becomes a lot of personality issues that are often threatened with litigation. So uh, you know, I've handled all kinds of situations like that. Now, in, in terms of development, I've handled um, disputes with developers. In fact, Monument's going through one right now with a developer that I had a very good relationship with. Uh, evidently it's broken down. I don't know why, but um, you know, it's very key to maintain those relationships. I have always said that the legal system is the absolute worst way we have of adjudicating disputes. It, it rarely comes to a satisfactory conclusion. Um, and so you know, I, I've worked very hard throughout my career to use any experience I had in litigation to help communities make good decisions about how to avoid situations like that or to get them out of situations that they found themselves in.
Chris, I want to make sure, the question was, the research of Frasier, and you used three examples. You talked about lawsuits and then HR and then dealing with developer. Do you use those by analogy for, for Frasier issues that you know about or?
Well, I don't know about personality issues because Rob is probably so good that he's never had any issues. So uh, but but certainly the, what you read in, in about the lawsuits and, and uh, and those types of things. I know Ed mentioned in his meeting when he announced his um, retirement that that was one thing he wanted to get cleaned up. So yeah, I mean, I think that those are um, analogous situations that, that could, and could face um, and are facing the town.
Sure. Thank you. Very fine.
Hey, um, can you describe your experience interacting with, interacting with neighboring communities?
Well, this is my favorite part. Actually, it really is. One of the things that I've, you know, the thing I like about small towns is you can't do everything on your own. Uh, for you to get the most bang for the buck for your citizens, you have to form cooperative partnerships. You have to have collaboration. Uh, I've never thought it made sense for small towns to have their own fire departments. It's too expensive, the coverage is too narrow. It's a way better spread among a larger group of people. So um, I've always been a proponent of making governments work together well. Uh, I think that's the duty of all public servants. I think we don't always do that very well. Um, I'll give you an example. I had a forty-year water agreement with the city of Lawrence and when I was with the city of Baldwin City, and they were going to leave Lawrence as a customer and build their own system uh, with three other cities. And it was going to be nineteen million dollars, which to a small town, as you know, is a, is a huge investment. And I said, well, what's the problem? The problem isn't that the lines aren't good. They're still good. The quality of the water is fine. It's that they didn't feel treated very well by the other municipality. And uh, funnily enough, the new city manager and, and there was the city manager in Lawrence, he's in Castle Rock. So when I was in Monument, the guy's always fifteen minutes north of wherever I'm at. And so I don't know, I better tell him we're fifteen minutes north of here. He has to tell him that's where his next job is. But so the, what, funnily enough, I sat down with Dave and I said, we gotta fix this. I go, if I put nineteen miles of line, water line in right next to perfectly good line, that's already there. All because to these two governments can't get along, that's failing the citizens. It's duplicating infrastructure, it's cost that doesn't need to be encouraged. Makes no sense. Um, and so we negotiated a deal. We've got uh, Baldwin citizens better cost control over their product and better say in the uh, capital projects that affected them and overall was a better decision. Well, that's all because the governments got together and worked together. It wasn't the governments, it was it was the relationship that I formed with Dave Corliss that allowed me to do that. And so you know, I think that's what small cities need to do in all kinds of things. Col- collaborative cooperative effort across the board is how smaller cities can compete with the amenities that larger areas of population have. Uh, we can give the same quality of life, but we can only do that if we rely on the partnerships that we establish together to do that. And so um, you know, that's um, that has always been my philosophy and is actually one of my favorite things. And, and plus you get to know more about your neighbors, what's going on with them. And it just makes for overall better governance.
You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. The time flies happily on sales tax income. You have experience developing a diverse revenue stream? And how would you engage the public around economic development?
Well, I, I do actually. It's, you know, in, in the Midwest, uh, you know, sales tax is um, much more prevalent. And uh, in Pleasant Hill, Missouri, we were entirely uh, uh, dependent on uh, sales tax. And that's not a great place to be in two thousand nine-ish times. And so we had to learn very uh, rapidly that we had to diversify our ability to um, you know, to continue to raise revenue even when declining, declining sales taxes were coming in. So excuse me. So uh, yeah, I think you have to diversify, you diversify. One of the other things that I think that small towns rarely do is they aren't, they aren't usually leveraging their ownership of their utilities uh, to spread the cost of providing those utilities accurately to the, to the um, the whole of the community. And so um, when I went to the town of Elizabeth uh, last year, I found that they were not supporting. So their, their general government was supporting all kinds of um, operations of their utilities. And I said, well, if you operated that water franchise, you'd have to pay the city where you operated that water franchise, five, five, six, seven, eight percent, whatever it is. And why aren't you charging yourselves? Because that's an accurate reflection of the cost to operate that utility that you're hiding to the detriment of your taxpayer, to the benefit of your ratepayer. Now, in many cases, that's the same, but ratepaying people are, are uh, or at least they feel like they get something from ratepaying, right? They get a product, they get a service. And oftentimes they don't feel the same way about, say, a general government service. So one of the things that you, you um, would want to explore is uh, kind of reallocating either like a, a, a payment in lieu of a franchise fee from utilities to the general fund. Uh, it doesn't always have to be a lot. It certainly needs to be something that doesn't impair your, uh, utility's ability to uh, engage in their planning and, and saving. But you certainly, I think that that is, is uh, a way you can do some of that. And then you know, how do you engage the public in economic development? You know, to me, I, those projects sell themselves to me. You're like, oh, you're going to put in a distillery or a brewery. Like when I look at the financial statements in Frasier and I see the vicious circle and I'm like, that's a community that's investing in itself. And uh, and to me, that's how you're going to get people excited about it. And you know, I have been a part of campaigns to uh, to uh, establish um, smaller sales taxes, like a quality of life or uh, some uh, park sales taxes. Uh, generally, when we've been successful in doing those types of things, it's because we've, we've been able to sell it to so many constituencies that enough people are like, they see the obvious benefits of their community. And you know, I, I still think the American taxpayer is willing to pay for something that they want. And, and, and uh, so that's how you have to sell those projects, the same way that you sell economic development is. Look at the economic development multiplier you get from this project. So don't think about the say fifty thousand dollars that you gave up in some kind of fee or, or, or uh, uh, tax that you uh, didn't have the developer pay. No, think about the business tax that you're going to collect the ten years after the project's completed. And then when you tell them, hey, and with that money, you show them what you're going to do with it. With that, we're going to do this part. We're going to do this. We're going to do this. You show them that it's reinvested in their community or the more of the things that they want, that's when you get buy-in on economic development.
Kind of answered the next question.
I will move on to the next one. Uh, summarize your experience in major land use and development negotiations, conservation easements, annexations and metro districts.
Uh, I've done all but one of those. Uh, I, I will say that uh, the, the primary um, thing that I learned in coming to Colorado, metro districts are kind of a creature of Colorado statue. I didn't even know what they were when I moved there from the Midwest. I was like, and, and really I came to it, this realization in a really strange way. So people would call and complain about their plow, their snows, their roads being plowed. Funny enough, today we see the same thing. And, and uh, I'd be like, okay, I'll look into that. And I'd look in, I'd call my public works director and say, hey, Tom. I'd be like, okay, I'll look into that. And I'd look in on all my public works director and say, hey, Tom. Wha- what's going on on that? He goes, we don't plot that road. I go, I know you don't. I go, that's why she's calling me. He goes, no, 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 you don't understand. That ain't our road. He goes, it's our road, but we don't plot it. We don't take care. We don't do any. Oh, okay, why? So that's when I learned the hard truth about metro districts. Within Monument, I had three metro districts. Um those metro districts were of varying levels of uh suitability in terms of how they were initially financed. Uh one was actually um in failure. Uh the mills were not enough to even carry out its minimal duties. Uh we had some negotiations for years about fixing that. Um. You know, one of the things that I did, Tribe Metro District handles the majority of citizens in Monument in terms of their utilities, their streets and everything else. We didn't even provide their water. Cause their water's on the other side of the highway, I twenty-five. So. So I've had to work with metro districts because metro districts were fundamental to the success of the service of our citizen. Even though, so I mean, really, it came about because I was tired of getting complaints that I couldn't do anything about. And I hated giving the answer to the citizen. That's really nothing I can control. So what I had to do was work very hard with the metro districts. How can we help you do? What you're supposed to do better? And how can we? Lack of a better motivation, how can we stop the phone in my office from ringing with people complaining about your service? And so, you know, metro districts are are difficult. You have to fight at the very beginning when they get set up. It's so important that they be self-sustaining, that they generate enough revenue through their mills. And in the past, I don't think that we've done that. I think we've many communities. And Monument in particular, allow the developer to take. Too much of the tax benefit of those lower interest rates and. Uh and lower taxes for their uh construction materials. And by the time we realize that the metro district is failing, the developer's long gone. The taxpayer and the general community is holding the bag for that. That uh and that's continuing to be a problem. Uh I don't think it's getting better. So my experience is that you negotiate the heck out of those agreements on the front end. And make sure that the town is always protected when those metro districts. You have to get the money upfront when the developer is still around and still motivated. And still at the table and is still a partner. Because once they've. Instructed the majority of their products and make, they're not a partner anymore. They're on to the next project. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. That's that's business, right? But they don't have the long-term interest of the community. Many don't have the long-term in uh um. Uh interest of the community as a whole. So you've gotta really uh negotiate those agreements at the beginning. Um annexations, I would tell you, unless it's voluntary and a hundred percent, don't do them. Uh they're always nasty fights. Uh you get bloody. Uh if there's a hugely compelling reason to do it, okay. But that's a policy decision. I would just tell you that if you were asking me as your um city manager, hey, do we? We wanna annex this, I'd tell you. Be aware, you're gonna get bloody unless you've got a hundred percent and you better hope that you get it done before somebody changes their mind.
Chris, you talking about uh greenfield or already developed annexation?
Already developed generally because that's when you're usually, yeah, greenfield a little bit easier, uh obviously. Uh cause they they wanna come in and and you've got control of the development and it's in there. So. Appreciate that. So. So I've got experience with all of those things. And you know, as a lawyer, I see these agreements all the time. And I I I. I actually contract law was my favorite. Class as a first year and I didn't like much of the classes in my first year. And I thought I did great. That was the best class I had. I got a C on that. Uh class. I was like. I guess I just don't have the mind for a contract lawyer, which is good because when I read contracts today, I get sleepy.
So conservation easement.
Never dealt with a conservation easement, but the same rules are the uh apply. And that is. Understand what you're bargaining, understand what the law is, make sure that you know what your goals are at the outset for the agreement. And make sure that all of that is in your agreement when you sign it.
How would you handle when uh developer? Comes back and wants to renegotiate the metric history?
Well, it kind of depends. It it it. One of the things that is important about these is they're all fact specific, right? Every development is different. They really are. And so there's. All kinds of factors that you're gonna wanna analyze as you evaluate that request. And again, it's a policy decision. Uh. I'll give you a brief example. I know she is killing me on my time and I know that I'm not very good at. I'm not very good with brevity. Hey, when you get paid by the minute, you talk a long time. So um. Brief uh question. We had a performance guarantees on a movie theater in Warrensburg, Missouri. Um and it was during a recession, just two thousand eight, two thousand nine-ish, I think. And um desperate need for the movie theater, the public really wanted it. Uh but we knew the developer was in trouble. We also knew the developers all over Kansas City. We knew the minute that we freed up their letter of credit. That. Construction would halt. We wouldn't get that project finished. That's what the city attorney and I both told them. I can say now in executive session. Uh that was our advice. We said, hold them to the fire. That's the only way that that parking lot and the and the lighting and. Everything else, because the building was up. But so that's the only way. That it's gonna get done. The minute you release that letter of credit, you've lost all your leverage and you're done. And. They. Batted one eyelid maybe for a half second and let them out of the letter of credit because they didn't, they wanted to be a good partner. I understood why they did. Um. Fast forward another year later, we were finishing the parking lot. We were paying for the asphalt. We were finishing the electrical. We were doing all of the work and the letter of credit. Into the wind. So um. My thing is every deal has to be evaluated by the quality of the partner across the table from you, right? You have to know the person you're doing business with is going to follow through on whatever they put on the piece of paper. If you're going to be fighting in in a court over those things. You don't have a good partner, right? And so I I think it's um. Uh but that doesn't mean you can't. Get a good deal. For yourselves. It just means that you it's gonna be a harder negotiation. But if you stick to the fundamentals of what you want, then you can evaluate. Does this deal still make sense for us? So I don't know. You you redevelop something or they wanna re renegotiate the agreement. Uh you know, let's be honest, make it be just like if you had a deal to get, you know, to. Refinance your house or something for a of small business. You're gonna make a pros list, make a cons list. Start evaluating this. Figure out the things that you absolutely have to have in the deal. If you can get them in that renegotiation, get them. That doesn't mean you shouldn't do it. But you should always go into the negotiation eyes wide open. Um. So I mean, that. I I think you always have to be a developer friendly because we wanna be a developer friendly community. But those have to be backed up with empirical data and evidence to prove that you have a willing partner on the other side.
Remember, you've got a little extra time because uh of starting a little late.
Are you familiar with proposition one twenty-three that just passed? At state level?
I'm not.
Okay. Do you have um? Experience um with workforce housing? That's our number one priority.
Yeah, I've uh actually. Yeah, the and I I thought it was interesting, the the action you took on December seventh with the affordable um housing development. Uh is absolutely a step in the right direction. We were always uh. Uh one of the problems we had in Monument is that the cost of living was such that the. Um youth, so people. That's a fairly old community, right? So. The the boomers and the Gen Xers that live in that nation, the kids of those kids didn't have anywhere to live. They couldn't live. In that town. And so they were consistently trying to, how do we develop areas? One of the ideas I had was to create a uh, you know, a a make money in a creative district. And get it was approved as one of those cities because you can do some affordable housing projects under that. Um uh area and. Um so we were exploring that. Uh we were all always working with the state to see what we could do. Um. Unfortunately, I could never get a board as invested in affordable housing as I was. Um uh and so, you know, those projects never came to fruition, but I mean, I've had experience. I understand how they operate. Just have to be able to get one done. No, I do think it's interesting. The Springs is dealing with a problem right now of. Uh they they have still grown the product price of housing beyond what they call a missing middle. Which you've probably heard that when you were discussing your affordable housing project is. So people make. Too much to qualify for the affordable housing under the guidelines of many of the federal programs. But they still can't afford that gap between there. And so uh I know the city of Gunnison is uh has. Become a partner in some of those affordable housings. They actually purchased some of these affordable homes. And have created their own programs with higher eligibility limits. Uh so that they can have their teachers and 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 uh, you know, police officers and things like that, more able to live in the community. So. Uh I think that that's especially important. As you all know, I mean, I'll have to you the. The resort towns, this is the, it is probably the most. Uh existential threat to your growth. Is that you can't grow without the people to sustain the growth. And if they can't live here, and we've learned in the pandemic that they'll just stay where they're at. And now they can work somewhere else in their living room. So until we uh have equalized the market a little bit. You're not gonna deal with that. And and I think that 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 any projects like that are ones that you ought to be supporting.
Do you have much experience dealing with um? I I guess like all recreational. Opportunity parts, trails, open space development, that's a big. Um priority for this community. Um. Since it's a tourist destination, but we we have tremendous resources um that we can take advantage of that. Can you elaborate a little bit on your experience there?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I I love parks. In fact, I would rather be a Parks and Rec director. If you had a Parks and Rec director position, I'd tell you, hey, I'll. I'll do that for free tomorrow. So um why I I love that because. It's the the fun side of city government, you know, it's the part that people care about. It's a front-facing, customer-oriented part of the. Uh operations of the city. So uh yeah, I mean, um we used our funds back back. Uh when federal money from uh from the Obama administration was falling from the sky, much like. The Biden administration recently. Now, I will say that they came with a lot more strings attached, but we were able to do a trails project. The Katy Trail in Missouri is a famous trail. And we used a. Uh Rock Island spur, old um railroad dedicated right away. That we used to actually link trails to create five hundred miles of bike trails through Missouri. And we were a huge link in it. And so. That was a fun project to work on. I don't wanna tell you that I'm I'm responsible for it, because I had a great. Parks and Rec director. He's now the um assistant um chief of vice president of the university that was in my old city. Baldwin City at Baker University. And Scott was fantastic. And he would ask me to help him on that project and. I would jump at the chance to not. Do bank reconciliations that day if I could go out to the trails and and hop on the four-wheelers and kinda. Uh work on that project. So uh I've done a lot of those types of things. Um. Uh I actually think those are huge because. While they're not critical to the everyday existence and and mission of the city. Uh you know, I always had a fight with my public works director to tell tell him. Hey, there won't be people to turn on your lights and to flush your toilets if they don't want to live here. And these are the things that people want to live here for. Uh. So you know, I think anything you can do to set yourself apart from an amenity standpoint and and you know, I think with um. A GOCO and all these other uh avenues for financing these projects, you ought to be. Uh leveraging every opportunity you can to set yourself apart as a recreation destination.
I think you may wanna skip the next couple of questions.
That's what I was.
Yeah.
Although um. The one about the oversight of the wastewater treatment plan. What? Joint use facility in our special district.
Sure. So so if you if you if I take you back a little bit to that water experience, right? That was with three other communities and we were. Um. Kind of planning this new water treatment facility, right? And we would be partners. It's, you know, not rocket science. It's much like your your sewer district where you're. Roughly a third member of the the sewer, the joint fund, right? And so uh you know. I mean. It's it's not like anything. It's just like anything else. If you make the government entities work together, joint. Facilities like that are awesome. They're great. They 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 are good for everyone. They give you the most bang for your buck. They spread the risk. Now. Again, it goes back to your partnership and how well you make those partnerships work. Can you get along when you run it? I noticed that there were two other entities. A private entity was gonna be a partner in that water district along with. Uh two other communities. Two of those communities I felt were um were good partners. A third one was not. And I thought. Well. Look into the future, folks, when and they were in an area of high growth toward the metro in Kansas City. So you know, I've got a lot of experience with those groups. You know, I can't follow the golden rule and that is. Treat others how you wanna be treated. Do what you're supposed to do. Uh chip in where you can and pay your fair share. And joint uh experiences are great. I I'm all for them. I think small towns should do more of them. They should do all kinds of districts to to provide better service. And be able to spread that cost to the people that are actually getting the benefit of the service, right? Too often, if we try and do it in-house. We're paying these huge investment expenses. And upfront debt. And we're paying it all with this same group of people. Well, if we can expand that circle. And it's usually the same people that are getting the service. That's the best way to do it for small towns. So I. You know, we we were a partner in Monument with the waste treatment facility, just like you are. We were not the. The actually the district and we were one of the members. Uh so just like Frasier Valley, we we kinda were one member. So I mean, I I used to go to those meetings, I've sat on those boards. I understand how they operate. And really, the best advice I give is. Be a good neighbor, be a good partner and and those are fantastic projects and something that I I think that you have to um. Explore.
Okay, yeah. Um. There's a couple of questions at the end that I think are really important and would probably should. One of them would be, when would you be available to start? And have you looked for housing? And then I was um. Interested when you said you would. Like to have Frasier be your professional home. I was the word professional. I was struck by curiosity.
Oh, okay. Well, let me deal with that one real quickly. Uh because uh I had a recruiter tell me that I was that my resume made me look old. I was like, man, I'm not even fully gray. I know it's getting a little thin, but I'm not. Anyway, uh. He says, your resume's got way too many dates. It shows way too many that you're old. So basically, I said, alright, fine. And so I paid some company and they wrote a form. Uh resume. They used mine. Followed around. I personally think I like mine better, but I don't know what the cutting edge of resume writing is all about. That letter, I didn't say my professional home. That's not my words. That was a cover letter that was. They give me this, you know, I was I was trusting the experts, right? But I thought it sounded a little strange, too. It wouldn't be my professional home. It'd be my home. You could take that adverb out or or that adjective out. So. Um I've I've looked at housing. I we. We we would definitely have to have a transition. My wife has a year left on a um uh non-compete agreement for one physician group to another. She moved about a mile away. And so she's uh gotta work that out. Uh and so. And then she's trying to decide. And obviously, we've got kids in the middle of the school year. So um. I would anticipate having some sort of transition period. Um. Uh but uh. You know, uh. Uh we we have looked um. Very comfortable with with the that there are. Housing options in the range that would work for our family, both. Housing options in the range that would work for our family both on a transition. And then, you know, I was telling one of the staff that. Uh this morning, I was like, well, you know, the only benefit to this crazy Colorado housing market is I already have a house in Colorado. So at least I get the benefit. It's a net neutral for me. I'll sell my house for far more than I should. And and I'll uh at least have some of that equity to play with when I I do it. So that's, you know, also, I mean, it it has always been. Probably something I take too much for granted. My brilliant physician wife, who is the most capable person I've ever met. Uh has uh always given me the freedom uh because of her profession and because of how absolutely excellent she has at her job. She's always been able to support our family. She could do it on her own. She doesn't need me. Uh but. Uh so that's given me a lot of flexibility over my career. And in fact. I mean, I still, when I left working for the state of Colorado to go back to Missouri, take my first internship in city management. I don't know how I did this. My wife, we had a four-year-old, a two-year-old, and she was pregnant. And she let me go live. In Missouri for a year in an apartment on my own. While she took care of the house and finished up her last year in the army. I mean, I must have been a lot better looking back then because I don't know how I got her to do that. Uh but. But you know, she's just a tremendously giving person, has been supportive of me professionally. Uh and just as I have been of her and and following her around for her um military career. Uh we're a true partnership. We're we're a team and we'll figure that stuff out, but it's given me some flexibility.
So I heard you're aware of the housing prices up here and um and I heard your, it sounds like you're, you talk with your family and they're on board with the idea of this. Fraser uh. You know, transition or whatever that might take a year or whatever. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I've got some clients that I still have projects going and and I my my partner would be able to transition to some of those. Um but there are a couple that uh like that Jamesville city manager job. That's so it. Uh it would probably be in, uh but I mean, the nice thing about your situation is you got to end to March. So that's somewhat um uh nice. But uh it would take me, you know, at least probably um. Two or three months to wrap up the projects that I have in the hopper and uh uh transition out of my current business. And so that my partner can take over any existing clients that still have outstanding work by then.
Okay, and the the housing thing is not a not a barrier. Is that what I use?
Yeah, not not. I mean, I I will say that this visit today has told me I want a garage. I'm serious. I'm like, I, because I would see these houses. I'm like, oh, that's nice. But you're they they took that picture in the, you know, last fall. So um I uh I definitely. And I need one that's somewhat heated so that my windshield wiper won't.
I I want to, we're getting so tired. Go ahead. Any any conflicts of interest that we should be aware of? With your other work or consulting work or anything that potentially would be a conflict?
No, I I I've I've done work for Elizabeth. I've done work for Hotchkiss. I've done work for Paonia. I can't think of anything about those communities or that would uh create any problems.
Okay, so Louis, I think, I don't know, I don't want to guess, but. The the consulting work that you're doing is like what I'm doing, actually, but paid for it, helping people with the transition and and that kind of thing, right? So when you say there's a couple, three months, um what kind of work do you have?
It's it's we we've signed contracts. I've got Grand Island, Nebraska. I've got to help them find a a city manager and a uh. Um director of public works, uh the city of Jamesville. Uh we get two cities in Texas that I'm working on the negotiations for finalizing city manager agreements. Um most of the business that consulting has been. Uh executive recruitment. And it's one of the reasons that it hasn't been as fulfilling to me. Part of it is professionally, it was the same thing over and over again, just hiring people. And that while that's interesting enough. It it's particularly unsatisfying because you get to know these communities, you get invested in them. And then some other person gets to do all the fun stuff that you were working on, you know, while while they were in transition. And so uh to me, that's kind of what started me back into looking at the market as saying, you know, I I I want to be fully used up. I want to give every last measure of uh my abilities to a community and. Uh not just here, piecemeal there. And and we didn't get the variety of work because, of course, we started during COVID. And so we've done some comp studies, like comp and class studies for for communities like Hotchkiss. And we've done some strategic planning for towns in Texas. Those were the things I wanted to do. Um but quite frankly, tho- those are uh less available in Colorado because of organizations like DOLA that do it for free.
So what about um? Do you have any um? Any plans in the future that could take you away from? Your your position like exotic vacations or uh. Obligations that may pull you away from your your job?
I'm not a, I'm too tall to fly more than three, four hours away. So uh no, I I I don't have anything. You know, we 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 intend to travel quite a bit to watch our son play college basketball. Um that's important to me. Uh he's a pretty good player and he's gonna play. Uh pretty high level, I think, somewhere. And uh so I will definitely. Want to attend to those items. And I've still got two boys to play. I mean, Granby's basketball coach, I don't know who he is, but I should call him. Tell him they're about to get a lot taller. So.
So we have like two minutes left.
Sure.
Can I ask, can I ask a question from kind of called up to some staff questions? It's a short one and I'd like you to answer.
Be sure to breathe instead of.
So um just wanted to kind of clarify your sense of the the vision for a place. Does that come from the board? Does that come from the manager? Does that come from the community? And what's the manager's role in in envision for a place?
Well, I think absolutely. First of all, the people that have the best vision are people that know the place the best, right? Uh but you sometimes need that outside or third party to come in and guide that vision and say, okay, here, I've heard from this piece. And this piece and this piece. Let's see if we can bring them all together. And the my favorite thing to do is retreats because it gets people out of their bunkers. Gets them to know each other a little bit better and they exchange ideas and you what you find and a quick story, I know you should breathe. Elizabeth, I will tell you this. I had two council members who absolutely it could not stand one another. When I did individual sessions with them and then we did a group retreat. Can I tell you that their answers to the things of their vision for that community were almost identical? And in fact, when I and I used to use that against them all the time, I'd say, remember, I know you don't like him, but. Look at all of this stuff you guys agree on, right? And and to be honest, I think it did help a little bit with their working relationship because they didn't see each other. They still didn't like each other by the time I left, but but that is what your role is, is to help everybody see what their actual vision is. And then once you get to know the community, obviously, you want a manager who's gonna chip in their opinion, right? Because if you don't, why are you hiring them? The I that's probably been my uh problem too often is that I'm too frequent with my opinions to board members. And I've learned from that uh because it's it's it 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 isn't always the best idea. Sometimes you have to let the group lead and you follow and help. Other times, when you see that the group's not making it, you can step in.
How how would you handle like when a board is is making a decision that you think is not. Not correct or not legal or what whatever, for whatever reason, you think it's a bad choice or a bad decision? How do you handle? How do you handle that as just as a city manager?
Yeah, that's it's a great thing. And I could give you a textbook answer. And I'd tell you that my textbook answer probably uh. Doesn't work. Uh but I mean, most managers will tell you, well, it's the it's policy decision. You just. Put it on your record and you just do whatever they tell you to do and move on. Um my my feeling is you do your absolute best to communicate individually and and as forcefully as you can. Why you have the strong feeling that you have. And you have to pick your battle. Maybe it's not on everything, right? But if it's important and significant and existential, then I think you have to go on record with your concerns about it. But you do that in a way that's not, you know, it's just documenting. It's just saying, this is what I think and the years of the reasons why. And and uh but if you choose to do something else, I'll make it work to the best of my ability. And I don't think I've done that as well as I should have in the past sometimes. Be because it is hard to get on board for something that you don't have your heart in, that you don't necessarily believe is the right decision. But I do know now through experience, you absolutely have to do that. And you have to become so, let's say that we're. Once I've exhausted all of my persuasive abilities to the to the most. And and we don't go the direction I want. You can't pout about it. You're not a kid. You 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 just, you can't be like LeBron at the end of the Celtics game and throw a fit. You 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 just have to accept it and move on. And uh and and then you you say, well, okay, if this is where we're going, I'm gonna be the newest. Biggest best cheerleader for this new direction. Well, call call me tomorrow. I'll I'll answer whatever question you got.
Well, I'm just concerned about like sort of fiduciary duty that we have in the board. To our constituents, right? We're not doing what's best for them, what's right for them. Thank you. Thank you all. And you're you're aware that uh Wednesday will be a deliberation, not tonight, uh because of the sort of. Who's in the room still? They need to.
Take your time. It's 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 a tough call. And I know you've got two other really good candidates. I know both of them. I don't know personally, but. I know of them and I think you're in great hands, no matter what you decide. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your diet.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We're still recording, just so everybody knows.
Yeah. Still recording.
Want to take a break? Okay, now we're going on to our second interview with Michael Brock. And John is going to ask the questions this time.
Okay, fair enough. Um. You obviously work for the town, so I'm gonna ask us a little bit different. Um. The first one is basically a brief summary of your education and work experience, but but why don't you just uh introduce yourself? Uh and how you'd like to go about being, you know, a manager, having your experience about that?
Okay, yeah, so um a little bit of background. Some of you guys know me a little more than others. Um. Um I'm originally from Iowa. Uh we moved here in uh twenty fourteen. Lived in the Thornton Westminster area for a while. Um and went to CU Boulder for my business degree. And um once we finished that degree, we, the plan was to move up here. We actually had a place to live, just had to find a place to work. Started talking to people a few months out. Um we were coming up here with a two-month-old, so I had to find a place to work. And um and I started talking um to Jeff Durbin. And I uh started talking to Captain Trotter and some of the staff here and getting to know it. And uh. It's just crazy how it worked out. And um and I saw a great opportunity here. They recreated a position that they had previously. That was a state funded position. Um and the the um best and brightest program. And got my feet wet in local government. And after a couple of years of doing this. Um I was like, okay, I I have some some benefit uh through the military for my GI Bill. So it's like, I should probably go and get my masters. And this seems like a pretty great career field. It's fun. It's diverse. There's a lot of good challenges to do. You're not doing the same mundane things over and over. I really enjoy the work that I do. Um and um. One one unique advantage I have is working for three town managers in Fraser. Um in addition to having a strong network of the town managers and assistant town manager, just professionals that work in the in the industry. And this county and throughout the state. Um and. There's been some encouragement from those, from a lot of folks to to really, okay, you need to do your education, need to get it, get into that. So um started my master of public administration about two years ago at University of Colorado in Denver. Uh it's been a great experience. I really enjoyed the program. Got to uh ask a lot of questions that were relevant to the workout doing at any given point in time. And um worked out very well. And I'm I'm now um about three months away from finishing my masters. Um I'll be writing a um a cast song, which is somewhere to like a thesis. Uh regarding what makes a downtown successful for economic development and and building your tax base. And I'll be doing that for the city of Brewfield that actually has four uh new downtown areas they're developing. And uh and it's really exciting because it's like, okay, there's the mechanisms that you can have in place to make things successful and create. You know, maybe you're looking at that tax increment financing option. Uh maybe you're looking at, maybe there's a metro district involved. And there's a different strategy there to make sure they have the basic necessities for infrastructure. But then it's really about. What is unique to those different areas that make them successful and attract people to come visit? That makes someone like, that's a really neat area. We should go back. Let's go do that activity. And let's go hit that restaurant. Let's go grab a beer. At Fisher's. Let's go get a nice, you know. Made in the Valley whiskey there at the Fraser Distillery. Um while I've got great options and. And that's something that I'm excited to really focus on. So uh I'll be finishing up my masters here in um and end of April. And uh it's been a great program. I've enjoyed it. And um I've been able to interrogate people like Michael Penny, who's the the manager down. Um in Castle Pines, I believe. And uh ask him all kinds of questions and all kinds of things I've been curious about, which are very much in alignment with. Uh I think a lot of great opportunities we have here for Frasier. So one advantage to me, kind of getting late to my education is, one, I found a career field that I enjoy doing. And two, I've been able to tailor my education and my focus for finals and papers and things of that nature for subjects that are relevant for Frasier and that can benefit Frasier. Outside of my education, I served in the army um in two thousand five to two thousand, end of two thousand eleven. Um I I was in in military intelligence. Uh I worked that for seven years. And then um worked as a contractor. I was recruited by a headhunter firm for a contractor overseas to um. Lead a group of five counterintelligence um individuals for a a counterintelligence team. And we were back in Afghanistan doing that with polos and uh really great. I I felt like we did a really good work over there. And uh and enjoyed that. And um. Once I was done with that, I was, I figured that was enough time in the sandbox. And I wanted to go get my college degree. And start a family. And I very successfully accomplished those things. So I'm very fortunate to have my wonderful wife, Jody. Um incredible woman. And we have two amazing kids, Bodie and Jane, three and five. Um so one thing I think I really bring to the table is just the perspective of a young professional with a family in the valley. And how relevant that is based on our challenges that we see. There's so many economic studies done on young families and the benefits of raising kids here and retaining families. And being able to benefit the local business community and nonprofits and just. And honestly, a lot of the values that we have inherent to our valley. So.
I think you've actually got into the next question, which is great. Uh why is the manager right, better position right for you and how you do it? That um maybe maybe you could touch on maybe what you, and I think you actually hit on what you bring that others might not right there with that. But is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, so I'm I'm really excited about this position. This is something I've been wanting to do. Um for about the last two years. Um last time they were going around the town manager position, I was in the middle of building a house. And I was in school full-time and working full-time and trying to balance family life. And it was just too much. And I didn't want to put that on myself. And I didn't want to put that on my family. Um I've learned a great deal from Ed. Uh he's done an excellent job mentoring me for this role. I definitely feel that I'm ready for the next challenge. I'm ready for the next career move. And I hope that's with the time of Frasier. And I see a tremendous opportunity here with the town that I would very much enjoy to be a part of. Um I think that I have developed the leadership skills through my military time and my time here. Um that I can bring to the town. Um my skill sets, I think, are work very well as far as accomplishing things. And working in different areas that I haven't worked in before. And it's learning how to do it right. And. I would even say, I would even speak that to that as an advantage. I would even say, I would even speak that to that as an advantage, because a lot of times people may have experience. And they may overlook certain things that maybe needs more attention. That is relevant to when you're addressing problems in Frager. Um I've been able to build um a lot of those relationships that I think is really relevant to the the position of town manager that. I I know all the stakeholders, I know all the nonprofits here in the valley, I know a lot of the business community. Um a lot of people that I'd be really interested in interacting with and bouncing some ideas off, you know, to see if there's some interest in some of the things we've discussed the last few months. Um and I, there's already some great partnership opportunities for things like in our open space that I've already talked through with certain individuals. And uh I think it could really help advance some of the different missions we have in town.
Thank you, so um. The question is describe your management leadership style, it's specifically focused on town manager role in working with staff for town board. Um I think the question, um thinking about sort of staff conversations this morning, it's like. How's how's manager Michael Bragg different from assistant or whatever your title was, sorry, um gonna be?
Right, so. So one thing, one one comment that Ed made when he, when he got here is, wow, so Frager really needed a manager. And something I've been, I've I've worked to try to provide is where there were opportunities to provide some some guidance and direction. That I felt confident in providing to take that off as play, I I definitely took advantage of that, I haven't gotten in trouble yet. And as far as me stepping into that leadership role, um. I still, my, as in in alignment with my management style, it's very much a democratic process, like. I'm not looking at taking on challenges by myself. The role of the town manager is not to be a subject matter expert in all the individual areas, is to be a general. Generalist in all these different areas and to be able to lean on your subject matter experts to make informed, good decisions. Um and that's why I think I would, I would kind of, you know, work towards and that's something that I already do. So as far as how I would change from the assistant to the management role. Obviously, there's a change in title, there's a change in some of the responsibilities. It's looking a little more strategic versus being more in the day to day operations. And pushing projects forward and and doing grant strategy and and uh pushing for, you know, different code changes and things of that nature. I being able to um. Provide oversight in those things that I've been working on this, this the last several years, I think would be a great benefit to whoever. If I were hired in this position. Um looking at a new assistant town manager or assistant to the town manager and being able to coach them and to be able to do those things well. And um everyone's got their own skill set that they can bring um and it's learning to find their skill sets and help them develop professionally. And that's the approach that I have with department heads and staff. Is to set people up for success, I'm not looking at keeping people to a limited level just to retain them in the town. My whole philosophy was, has always been to like, how can I help you accomplish what you want to do in this world, right? And hopefully that's the town, hopefully we can improve your strengths and your qualities that you bring to the town. And if if it comes to it, you succeed a better opportunity to do something else that you really want to do. Hey, I hope we, I hope we got you ready for it. And uh that's my approach to those things and as far as my management style, it's more be about being resilient. Some people uh may lack different experiences in different areas. Um if they need a lot of direction and guidance, happy to do that, happy to dive in there and we'll we'll figure, I'll figure that out with you and provide you some, some good coaching there. If you just need more empowerment and support, that's what I can do too, so I think it's really based on the department head and. Um and the staff and where they are in their skill sets and where may they be lacking? And where are some great professional development opportunities that we can push them to?
Michael, what what's been your experience in hiring and mentoring and. Even firing employees or you have much experience in in hiring?
Um in the military, you don't hire people, you're giving people. But uh sometimes I I've had to fire an individual before. Um and it was when I was working as the the lead on the the contractor receipts. Um we uh we had an individual who came and was hired on by this contracted firm to work on this counterintelligence team. And didn't have the quite the skill set um to meet the basic requirements to do the work over there. And a lot of the work was preventing risk to people who are going out in the field and doing round analysis. Um you know, packages for. Human targeting, which sounds kind of terrifying, but it's it's just human targeting. Um and um. And doing what we can to be effective but yet protect people and he he kept lacking those different areas and my approach to that is always. Where can we provide some opportunities to bring them up to speed? Where can we provide the coaching to really bring up the skill level that they need to be efficient in this role? And after several opportunities, um there just was not the interest or the willpower from that individual and we ended up. Have them, I ended up firing them from the team. Uh fortunately though, they were able to go work more on the logistics side of things and getting people in country and and processing through this, so it actually worked out great. Uh the gentleman actually much more preferred that than what he was doing. Uh just because of the stress, those type, that type of work and how how burdensome it can really be in those environments. Um so yeah, I've made that call before, um. As far as hiring, I was a part of the hiring process for for our our finance director Rob. For Paul, our new public works director, for Monica, our new project manager. Um was a part of those, got to ask some good questions, really drill down on what they can bring and what their. Their base philosophy is to approaching this type of work and. Um I'm I'm very proud of the staff that we brought on and ultimately it's a decision, but. Definitely get the green light on those last three that we hired there, which is fantastic. And when you're looking at hiring somebody for a role, you have a job description, you have, you know, where the history and what the real responsibilities are, but. What I usually look for is um can they problem solve, can they figure things out? If they don't know something, can they do the research and the work to 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 learn more about it? Um that type of uh drive, I think is great and when you can align that drive or, you know, passionate work that they want to do for the town. It's it's a win win for everybody.
Can I answer your question, Ross?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh what issues you're aware of in your research, if Frager, um how would you approach these issues, given what you know, I think the second part is probably most relevant, right?
Right, yeah. Um I do, I I have a list here of the, kind of the issues and opportunities that I've identified, yeah, um. And they're really in no particular order. Um the first and primary is obviously affordable and attainable housing. Um this is not anything new, this is just obviously is a, it's a priority to set by the town board, it's been set by our staff because of the town board's priority. And we've gone after opportunities to do this and we have a great opportunity with Victoria Village, which I think is really important. Um and it's going to require a lot of diligent planning, um funding and. And just making sure that we're doing things right. Um actually, earlier today, I was working with our attorney, our land use attorney that we hired for this contract um for Victoria Village. So we hopefully were able to iron that out and we actually had it ready for you for this Wednesday night, so we're really excited about, get the ball rolling on that. Um so it's not going to end with Victoria Village, it's a great opportunity, it's going to be several years of work. The whole goal is to make it something that the community is proud of. Um and that is relevant to the needed workforce that we have here in the valley. Um the next um issue is obviously with our aging infrastructure, we have a lot of old, old water and sewer infrastructure in town. That needs to either be maintained or replaced, it costs a lot of funding. Uh we need to ensure that we, I mean, the town needs to ensure they have enough water, an adequate water supply. And looking for acquisition of new water rights for the town, especially when we're looking at these types of annexations for large plots of land. Um where we're not quite sure yet on our water calculations, so staff is currently working on that, but that is something that I think really needs to be taken consideration. If if we're gonna look at annexing man land before doing a comprehensive study. You want to at least make sure the infrastructure and the services will be on par to support any type of new land being annexed to the town to make it successful. As the managing agency for the wastewater treatment plant, um we need to be able to protect our ability to treat and discharge water back into the Frager River. Um we also have um some issues that we're working through right now, um as far as uh people. The local breweries and distilleries, uh they're wonderful in our community, they provide a tremendous benefit, I really enjoy them when I get out. And uh it's just, we need to, we need to take a careful look at that and learn how to do it right, uh because either. Uh the residents of Frager are going to pay for that or the businesses will, and I think there's a good area to negotiate there and see what other communities have done. And how they approach this problem and come up with some reasonable solutions that can, that can handle that. As I discussed earlier, I think it's really important to strengthen and increase our tax, our commercial tax base and that comes directly with. Um doing what we can to help facilitate commercial development in our downtown and other areas in Frager. Um there's a lot of good focus on our downtown right now and I think we need to improve that focus and try to hammer out what the vision is, the board and the community really has for downtown. And then around that, we can work with some land zoning and some amendments there to help. Kind of pave the way to create that resilient downtown and that's going to increase our tax bases, that's going to increase our ability to replace roads. Um to do the the work that we need to do here in the valley. And enhance existing businesses while attracting new ones and um. Along with that, I think there's some great opportunities, we have this master plan for our cousin's ranch open space. Um the master plan, I think, is great, it's awesome, it speaks to the conservation values of Frager. And I think there's some some great ways to connect um that open space to the rest of our downtown areas and some other areas. I think that connectivity would really help draw traction to our downtown. And just enhance your open space and when you invest in those types of amenities, it drives traffic to Frager. And that's a great thing for commercial growth, development, attracting um developers who want to develop businesses in our downtown. And really bring that commercial growth to Frager, um we have a great opportunity based on the traffic that comes through forty. It's just capitalizing on it carefully and uh and just planning that out strategically. I think it's very important that we continue to spearhead environmental stewardship uh and sustainability in the Frager Valley. I think that can be done by updating our sustainability goals and our sustainability plan. Um we have a great opportunity to uh, we're, we're installing this uh two hundred fifty kilowatt uh solar PV system. At the wastewater treatment plants, excellent opportunity. And it's important for us to keep looking for opportunities to uh incorporate sustainability into the Frager Valley and the way that we do things. And my approach to that has been very much what makes sense, what's reasonable, what's what's economic. Um there's, there's economics behind bringing solar to the wastewater treatment plant because of our huge electric bills that we get there. They'll, we'll see some great cost savings there. Um and just honestly, I've been contacted by a lot of people that work in management in the Grand County. And they see Frager as the lead for for sustainability and environmental stewardship and I think it's a great thing to preserve and encourage and 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 keep moving forward. And we're gonna grow, you know, Frager is growing and it's just important for us to grow responsibly. Right, um I only have a couple of other things. Um I I believe there's an excellent opportunity to work with our neighbor, neighboring jurisdictions. Um and local stakeholders to address the deteriorating uh childcare situation, this is something that I'm very much aware of. Uh my wife is very much involved in childcare and she created this Grand County Moms Group that now has like a thousand members in it. And they're all either full time, they're either full time or part time residents, there's no just tourists that join the group. And she just saw a huge need just to help connect new and growing families, give them the support they need and someone's having a baby or they have a hard time with it, their support there. And it's definitely a passion thing of ours, but especially my wife and then just, she's incredible and uh. She's, she's done a terrific job with that, so we know about the childcare situation, there's, as I said before, the economics between. Uh being able to attract and retain families in the Frager Valley is huge and it's so beneficial on a variety of fronts. Um and it's something I think that needs to be taken a good look at, I think there's some great opportunities with legislation that came out last year. Um that we can negotiate with the county and it can help drive that forward. Um and the last thing is we're, we're currently, the town's currently under a lawsuit. Um and I think it's really important to have the history, um I have a a good understanding of the lawsuit, I have a good understanding. Of the characteristics and how we've gotten here in this lawsuit. Um I think it's something you definitely want to have a town manager that is uh both firm and resilient. Um continue to explore ways to reach a settlement, but if we need to go to court, we need to go to court and uh. And you need somebody who can be strong in your corner and I feel really confident that I can protect and preserve the interests of Frager and negotiate. Where there's room to negotiate and uh help compromise where maybe where there's room to compromise, to really. Get this lawsuit behind us and focus on some other things, um but not without handing it all over. Um and and giving up everything, all all levers that we have in the town. So definitely an important part there.
I mean, you you mentioned a lot of really important items for. For the town and community, I just wonder how how would you prioritize it, do it all at once, right, there's. Only a certain number of things you can work on at a time, right? How would you go about prioritizing, sort of your strategic vision of, you know, the the. Really important items, pending items for the town?
Well, I think it's really being pragmatic of the opportunities that make them available. Um and it's really important to have, you know, we need to have another board retreat and discuss the priorities set by the town board. Um I think it's really priority based budgeting is a very good way to approach your budgeting and that's what we've done and I think that's a good thing to continue. Um and it's it's looking at, you know, where may there be opportunities, like for Victoria Village, we were like a wave. For a a new type of funding that was coming out and it changed. And we are eyes, our eyes were right on it when it changed from a loan to a grant and we were able to be the first to get that money. And acquire Victoria Village to push for the affordable housing initiative. Where there's things like the childcare situation, legislation just changed last year, allowing lodging tax to be changed to support affordable housing and childcare. Um along with marketing. And that there's some great opportunities there, so it's really with um the priorities set by the board, ensuring that the 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 board is informed. Of, you know, potential um initiatives that we should pursue. And being able to make those decisions and ultimately it's the board's direction um that as town manager I would be looking for. Um but really providing the education, informing you of of um why maybe some of these may be more um vital than others. I think it's really important and uh get focused on the commercial growth, you don't want to ignore that or focus on affordable housing. And it's been described to me before, if you imagine Luke Skywalker with eight lead balls in the air. Um you're keeping them all afloat, you're trying to move them forward a little, little by little and that's honestly how it goes. Then that's been my role as assistant town manager, working on a variety of different projects, initiatives, code changes, uh while managing the staff that I manage. Um so it's part of the reason I love this work is because it is so diverse, but it's it's also being aware of. Um the issues and opportunities that are available to Frager and when there's a good foothold to really, you know, move something forward. And move that ball a little bit forward to address our goals.
Can I answer your question, Ross?
Yeah, you gotta watch this, since you mentioned, you said manage, manage employees here.
So I I currently mark, manage uh marketing and communications, so Sarah Wick. I I manage Monica Kopp, our new project manager for our new development process that she's working through and um. Um the facility as well and uh and additionally and and so my head is out or unavailable out by guys, staffs needed.
Okay, so you you have correct report.
I do.
Look at, move us forward a little bit here on on these uh questions and go to um. You know, the question is summarize your experience with major land use development negotiations, uh conservation initiatives, annexations, metro districts. Um I mean, you, I think the board knows what you've been around right here, so. Um maybe you just twist that a little bit and say, what, you know, what have you learned watching some of the folks? That have been in the manager's seat about what the role of a manager is in those things and and maybe how you see your role in. Right, in those things, negotiations, conservation initiatives, annexation, metro district.
Yeah, you know, it's really reflecting our code, looking at what our code says for development, um if there's opportunities to improve our code, um great. That they make sense for Frager. As far as, you know, land use and zoning and and negotiating different types of uh deals with developers or. Uh new businesses coming town, for example, or metro districts, you know, it's really leaning on the subject matter experts and having the the interest of Frager at heart. Uh when you're interacting with your attorneys, when you're interacting with these specialists who focus on these different types of of metro district analysis and. And really, you know, leaning on your subject matter experts is very important. Um that's, I I've learned that and I've learned that. That's, I, I've learned that and I've learned that, um. That, you know, you can be a, and this is, this is not. Talking to any of the managers that I've worked with here in Frasier, I've learned this just from being in this role and different, different people and stories that I've heard throughout the state, honestly. But you can have experience negotiating, let's say some new water rights or a, um. A new development coming online. You can have experience doing those things. But the relevance to Frasier, the relevance to where you're negotiating those items. Is, is a vital importance to understand the history of where you're negotiating, to understand the personalities behind. With whom you're negotiating, um. And having that experience, I think is extremely valuable. It's very easy to overlook the importance of certain things unless you know how we got to this point in the lawsuit or looking at this metro district. So it's, it's being informed from our attorneys, from, um. From our specialists, from our, from our planning, our planners and, and being able to transpose that information to very informing information. To our elected officials and to the community. And that's what I bring. And honestly, when you're looking, I spoke a little bit to, to land use and, and some zoning opportunity to think that we have with downtown. And I think there's some great opportunities there. Um, and you, if you want to have a vibrant downtown, your, your zoning needs to reflect that. And if you want to have, um. You know, or we just, um. You know, brought forward to the, to the. Basically, if you're looking at changing some zoning or looking at zoning new annexations in. It's very important to consider the infrastructure available, how much water is available, what's going to take to serve that. And that's what sets the zoning in accordance with the layout and where is that land? Is it along Highway forty? Does it make certain sense for some commercial space? Um, those things are really important when you're looking at annexations. For development agreements, um, it's important to follow the code. It's important to train our staff up. And if they're lacking capacity to build the capacity, if we need to add a, a full time employee to better address, uh, planning, zoning and development in Frasier. And it protects the interest of Frasier, that's an easy move. And, um. Essentially, you're looking to protect the interest of Frasier. You're looking at smart growth, to be responsible and be stewards for the town. That's why this. Uh, town was incorporated in the first place as to help when they need some of the steward, water, sewer, street sidewalks, power. And, uh, and development in the Frasier Valley, and that's our charge. So I take that pretty seriously.
You know, the board has identified, uh, attainable workforce housing as a top priority, um. And, you know, your experience, what, what would you do about, uh, workforce housing? And then are you aware of proposition one, two, three and, and sort of what would you use that level debt for?
Right, so proposition one twenty three brings something a hundred and thirty million, uh, to the table. And, um, and they have some, they're rolling out a good program for that and, uh, and actually. Uh, is in alignment with a lot of the energy of interesting and, um. And looking at, you know, potential renewables, it's, it's a, they're incorporating a lot of that to these new grants with proposition one three. Um, that's really important to stay on top of what types of funding is available and what's relevant to where we're at and where we can use right now. Uh, right now, we've acquired land, which is fantastic. I think it's important to continue to develop and, and, and direct funding and acquire grant funding to develop Victoria Village. Um, and let's, let's accomplish those goals that we set for Victoria Village, right? Um, and we're about, I'm excited to help kick off this master planning process and really see what comes out. I think it's really exciting. Um, as far as, you know, initial with affordable housing. It's, it's looking at, you know, if there's opportunities for new, um, revenue streams that make sense, great. Uh, we created the, the town board approved the first revenue stream to go towards affordable housing through the short term rental fees increase. Um, that's the first revenue stream, the housing partnership just got their, um. Their ballot initiative proves, looking at about one point two million dollars in funding. I've been working with them to push forward our initiatives. A lot of it and so much of it is about collaboration. So knowing, having those relationships with the division of housing at, at the Department of Local Affairs. Having those relationships with the housing partnership. Uh, when they ask questions about Victoria Village, me being there and being able to keep them informed on what's going on, where we are at the process and what's funding could be. Very much needed. Um, once we get through the master planning process, Victoria Village, uh, will ultimately get to, uh, the, the budget, the pro forma. Of how we're going to build this and make it affordable. And there's going to be a gap there and it's going to be, how can we address that gap between, um, how much it costs to build? This project of Victoria Village and, um. And what it takes to, to make it affordable, so people can actually live there who need to live there and support our local businesses. So the biggest focus would be Victoria Village. Um, I've also spearheaded the, some discussions about, um, our public works facility over here. We are hopefully looking at a new public works facility, um, where there may be some great opportunities with annexating new land or land for a public works facility. And, uh, I've already spoken to Ed and previously to Wes about, um. We have one section of land behind, uh, the public works facility where there's currently a trailer and we can scrape that trailer, we can. Go through the pub process to rezone it, to match the zoning across the streets around spot zoning, which is never a good thing to do. And, uh, with that, we could build four townhomes right there where that one rotten trailer is. Um, I think that'd be a great thing to do. You can design it to two phases so that when we do move the public works facility, the second phase would complement the first phase of development that's been created. That's all affordable housing, right here in the neighborhood, right next to the library and the school and town hall, which is honestly where, where the housing should be over here. I'm, I'm very glad that we haven't had any safety, um, incidents with our public works being here, but. Um, it's definitely an interest of mine to look for a new home for our public works facility. It's outdated, it's small, we've already outgrown it and we need to prepare for the next. The next, how that's greater continues to grow, providing those services. And, um, and getting heavy equipment away from our elementary school and, and Old Town Frasier, I think is great for everybody. And, uh, with that comes, uh, some dedicated deep restricted housing.
You want to talk about, um, enhancing disaster preparedness and building resiliency into a community and, and, and certain future?
Absolutely. Um, this is something I definitely have some experience in. Um. A lot of my work in the military was, uh, risk assessment and, um, and planning for the worst, honestly, and how you can react. Um, I've actually been focusing on that, uh, quite a bit in my role as the assistant here. Um, I've developed strong ties with, uh, Todd Holsworth of East Grand Fire, um, with the chief trainer. Or the chief police in Ware Park, Frasier. Um, and, uh, the emergency manager at the county, along with several other folks. And emergency services here throughout the county. Um, I, uh, had the, the, the benefit of when we were going through the twenty twenty. Year and, uh, the COVID response, the fire response, working with the emergency operations center, I was able to work with them quite a bit and volunteer my time. And, um. And it was great to really get connected with a lot of those guys and it's, again, it's all about collaboration. And for mercy response, it's knowing what equipment may be available in the event of emergency. And collaborating that with our emergency manager at the county and with local law, for, for EMS and the fire department. And being able to move quickly and communicate quickly and having clear communication with those types of scenarios, just wonderful. Uh, they've been doing some great training recently, talking about how they can be more resilient and different types of scenarios here in the county. And, uh, there's a conversation that's been involved in, I provided input for Frasier and, uh. And it will continue to do so just to protect our interest and protect our town from any type of natural disaster.
I'm going to ask you a question. You're, you're wearing a blazer. Have you ever worn it in town hall before?
Yes, for my interview. When I, when I first interviewed for this position, I was joking, my wife. Is I, uh, I wore this, I wore this jacket and this shirt. I'm like, I need a Garth Brooks. Dress shirt and that's what I had to go pick up, um, when I have interviewing for Frasier in the first place. So, uh. And then, uh, the only other time I wear it is for a daddy daughter dance right now or maybe the gala.
So that, that was a fun side of question. Are there, are there signals that you're going to give to staff in the community that you're no longer the assistant? Uh, with either how you present yourself or dress or whatnot, or is that important to do?
Uh, it's important to do, to do to some degree. Um, I also like, um. Matching the community to some degree as well. Um, there, I think it's important to, uh. To look good every once in a while and then I think it's some time to look a little more relaxed. I mean, that's a great, great style and that's my style. Um, as far as, uh, this guy, you know, making people aware of I'm stepping into this role. Um, it's something I've already been having a lot of conversations with. Word gets out, you know, everyone looks at Sky High News. A lot of people are excited about my opportunity here. Um, and looking forward to see what the, you know, the result is. Um, and, uh. It's a small town, so it's, uh, I love the accountability of the small town, but word gets out pretty quickly and like, oh, you're interviewed. I'm like, who are you? I don't even know who you are. And they may know my wife or something and that. But, uh, yeah, you know, it's. It's establishing that. I mean, obviously there'll be, uh, people via a press release and, uh, it'll be in the newspaper as it always is. And, um. And before I know it, I'll be meeting with people, um. Whether looking at, uh, local business owners or potential new business owners in Frasier, uh, landowners, there's always already, um, a landowner that. That we've been meaning to reach out to for a while, um, who's interested in providing some lands to the town. And, um. And yeah, really send the presence, but if you want to come speak to us, if you, I'm, I'm very open, you know, let's, let's see what you got and, uh, see if there's a great alignment to work with the town.
I promise you to save that for the end of summer, I have a finishing question, but backing up. Um, your experience with providing oversight of the wastewater treatment plant, joint use facility or special district. How's it different here? What's, you know, what, what is that question about?
So that question's about, uh, three entities that, you know, are part of that wastewater treatment plant. And I've. I, uh, I've been a part of a lot of those conversations. I have a very great working relationship with Joe Brupo, who does a tremendous job with the wastewater treatment plant. Um. And it's, it's a lot about, you know, um, looking for opportunities for where, where we can improve our treatment. Uh, where we can maybe save some costs, which we're doing through this, um, solar PV system that will be installed this year. Um, it's important that we maintain our permit and our ability to treat water effectively and put it back into the Frasier River. Um, and. It's, that's a very simple process. It sounds like it's a very, very intricate process. There's a lot of moving parts and there's a lot of regulations that continue to evolve with this. So it's. Um, having regular communication, um. Either through our public works director or directly with, with Joe, um, who's managing the plant. And being a part of those GFC meetings and, uh, really drilling down to what are the needs there at the treatment plant. And, um, and just, you know, looking how are there ways that we can, um, continue to improve our service to treat that water? And, uh, I mean, it's, it's an imperative service. It's an essential service, just seems like it's not the right word for it. It's, uh, it's imperative that we treat our water and then we put it back in the river to meet our requirements, say. And. I know the guys down for what wastewater treatment plant, I know, um, I know, I know Buff and I know Jim, the other district managers. Um, I have a good working relationship with them. I've worked with them on some other projects and things of that nature. Um, and they're all sanitation districts. And, uh, to me, it's, it's about communication and transparency and keeping everybody informed and do the research when we need to do the research, whether it's in source or outsourced. And, uh, making sure that we're informed enough to make the right decisions to. To keep that moving and to keep that operating.
That get to that question's purpose. So. You've been here five years, is that right?
Uh, just over five and a half.
Five and a half, okay, under, uh, three different managers and had a chance to be mentor to watch and maybe see some mistakes and some good things. Um, so. You know, an area with, with limited access to resources and employee pool, right? It's a, that's a small town, it's a small valley, right? In Grand County. Um, what have you learned about, uh, how you, how you cultivate and manage staff development and retention and? Just, just talk about how, how you would do that or if that's important.
So, um, similar to what I said this morning, uh, kind of about that question, yeah, is I, uh, I take the time to get to know our staff. Um, you know, it's, uh. These are people that you spend forty hours plus with a week, you know, you might as well get to know them. And when you get to know people and you, you, on, you, you genuinely care about people's wellbeing. Um, you learn how to create communication streams with people. And you learn how to, um, you know, uh, find ways to appreciate them and really understand what they do and find ways to, to make their jobs. Not necessarily easier, but, but being more resourceful to give them the tools they need to do a good job. And the great thing that I've seen here at town is the staff is, is terrific. Um. Everyone here wants to do a good job and it's harder to see that in a lot of different places. Um, employees are motivated when they see the snow falling, you know. Why, and when they're going to bed, they're like, ah, I'm going to get them to snow tomorrow, like, let's do this and, um. And they're really passionate about their work. Um, it's really important, I think, to maintain a culture where, um. You know, you're, you're open, you, you're, you're able to have conversations with the staff. And not just with department heads, but take the time to get to know your staff. And, um, and figure out what their goals are, figure out what their ambitions are. And sometimes it works really well if an employee is interested in the work they're doing to see if there's an opportunity within town. They can continue working for the town just in a different skill set. Um. For me, it's always been about supporting people, uh, bringing humor to the table, having a little fun, um. It's okay, it's okay to have a little fun and have a little humor and, and joke. I mean, that's honestly, we, we, we do that a lot here in the town and it's, it's great. We enjoy it. We enjoy the, the lightheartedness of the humor, especially when we're going through really challenging times, because sometimes when you're. When your head's kind of, you know, if you're, if you're going through some real big challenges in town and things seem like they're, they're not working correctly. It's good to have a light heart about it and, and still have the interest and the drive. To work towards solutions to our problems. And there's always going to be new problems and there's always going to be new lawsuits and, um. There's always going to be challenges. There's always going to be opportunities for the town and, um. Creating an environment where people feel like they can be heard and they can speak and they can, they, they're, they're, what they bring to the table can be harnessed. I think it's really valuable and, um. Back to my leadership style, being more democratic, it's, it's having people being a part of the process where it makes sense. And not making, uh, silo decisions, I think is really important as a town manager. Uh, being able to lean on your subject matter experts and, and really have that informed decision-making process. That's, that's my approach to management. That's my approach to leadership. Uh, always set, set people up for success and, um, and take the time to get to know.
Do you think is the right amount of time for a manager to be in a place to be most effective?
Um, it depends if they've been the assistant or not. So please, please understand that, um, if I'm selected for this role, I'm very much approaching it with a learning mentality. This is something we discussed this morning here. And, um, I, I obviously have a lot of understanding of our departments and our processes and our systems. I'm very much a system and process guy. If there is a process or system that's not working. There's an issue, you have to figure out, you get to take a step back and see what's really going on and how we can really fix this problem. Um, fix this process or it's fix this system. Um. Right of my time for me to be effective, I think I can, I, I'm going to be effective day one, I think, for this, maybe some of the smaller things. Um, to me, it's looking at justification. If there are changes warranted in our code and our processes and our departments and our staff capacity. If there's justification, like we need, we need this body, we need someone to do this work. Uh, we are growing, but we can no longer keep up with it. Um, and that's the type of approach that I would bring to the board when there's needs for more employees or there's a need in a change of position. Um, or something that we need to in-source versus outsource. Um. That's. As far as being effective, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to keep things moving, which I think is great. Um. You know, this morning, uh, it was spoken to a little bit about. You know, how, how it's, it's been, it's been a long process for all the staff to go through three different managers. It's. It's tiring to some degree and re-explaining it to somebody. And I think one of the advantages I. That I bring to the table is that continuity, understanding the history of, of where we're at right now with our different, um, challenges and things that we're working towards. And things we're all excited about, how we got to this point, this place and time, uh, with a lawsuit, um, with different projects, uh. And programs, I think it's very important. And being able to run at that continuity with being more informed and working, um, in tandem with our department heads and our staff, I think is going to set everybody up for success. Um, for me to be effective. I plan on being effective this year. We have a master planning process that's coming up. Uh, we're working towards all of our capital improvement plans for our water and our sewer. Uh, they showed you the sixty four million.
So your effective day one, what's the right amount of time for a manager to be at the job?
Oh, uh, when they, before they leave.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it depends.
Yeah.
Um, I, uh. I think it depends. And like I said before, everyone brings different skill sets to the table, um. Um, the average in, in Colorado is somewhere around five to eight years. Um, and I, I think that could be an adequate amount of time, if, if things evolve and, and remain. Um, if I, if I still remain a good fit, if I'm selected for this position. I continuously look to develop and learn and grow myself professionally. Um, to be, maybe be able to address things that I couldn't address day one. Um, so it really depends, it depends on the board's interest of where my skill set lies. And I think the skill set that I currently have is in alignment with the goals, the challenges that town has right now and has for the foreseeable future. Um, someone that's changing out of that position every five to eight, ten years, I think it's valuable. Cause it's helped bring some renewed perspective and um. And you never know if that could be a good thing for the town or not, but ultimately you're, you serve at the board, as a world of work. And um, it's just ensuring that the skill set for the town manager is in alignment with uh, the needs of the town.
Let me. Yeah. Um, so so lots of these questions don't really pertain to you because you're here. You have a, you have housing and all that, but I'm, I'm just curious, what? What would you do if you weren't selected for this position and how, how would you handle that? I mean, that's, that's a question I have. You know, I know it's an uncomfortable question to answer, but.
It's not comfortable, honestly.
How, how would you handle that situation?
Right, so if I wasn't selected for town manager, um, I, I'm, I think I'm ready for the next challenge. And um, and I'm looking at progressing my career. Um, do I have anything lined up? No, I don't have anything lined up right now. Um, if you dislike a new town manager that wasn't myself, uh, looking for setting him up for success as much as possible. But I would be honestly keeping my eyes open for opportunities that are good for my career advancement. Um, puts me and my family in a position where we can honestly have a mortgage for a house. Uh, we do rent a home right now and it's worked out very well. And uh, and I think it's working out well now still, um, but, you know. My family and I, we want to have a mortgage, we want, want a home, and that's really important to us. Being selected as town manager would enable us to, to be in a position to do that. Um, and uh, and if I'm not selected. Um, you know, best, best wishes to the new town manager, support him, and I'll be here for the foreseeable future. But I will be looking for new opportunities, it's just to be honest. Um, and I hope they'll opt in with Frasier, it's not, it's ultimately the board's decision and direction. And uh, and I don't have a problem with that. Um, and uh, love Frasier, just, um, we just have, you know, personal requirements that we can do for, for my family. And um, and being able to afford a place to live where we live is important to us.
I think, thanks for your candid response. Yeah, that, that, the next question was about how it fits in your career plans, plans, and I think that's, you, you're ready to be manager somewhere. Whether it's Frasier or some of the places, whatever, right, absolutely, turn up. We've got about seven more minutes to give you the same amount of time as, as previous, and we're, we're, we're really at the end of our questions here. Um, and I don't know if it's, it feels weird for you to ask questions of the board, but maybe this would be a good time, and then I'm going to let the board. Um, if, if they have some, you know, sort of Michael specific questions, given the fact that he is a, uh, an employee at Town Hall. And that's been the relationship with, and kind of like Lewis is, if you want to ask those, if now would be a good time. So first, do you have any questions for the board?
So I had a couple of questions, but I just, I guess I would just ask one, um, is what does success look like in five years? For a new town manager in this role to the board? What is success, what, what is the best successful outcome you could see in the next five years?
All staff. Open space park being created or to some degree and a usable space for our public. And families living and our work responsible. That's why.
Right.
I, I would just say. Being able to manage all the balls in the air and, and survive five years, I mean, it's, it's, it's a hard job, right? And, you know, us as a board, we're not aware, at least I'm not aware of all the day-to-day issues, you know, with, being able to. Sort of um. Coalesce those ideas and bring them to the board in a coherent fashion where we can understand, be informed, right? Nice, um. That's really important, a lot of us, you know, we're, this is really a part-time gig, uh, for all of us. And um, we're not aware of all the day-to-day challenges that you have, that now really just kind of. It's a tough job and being, being able to deflect all the, you know, criticism and controversy and all. Maintain a, you know, a, a balance of your, your life, your work-life balance and, and stay, you know, mentally healthy.
No, it's definitely important. And uh, one of the things I've seen just as a required characteristic for this role is integrity. Um, and it's grit and it's uh, just being resourceful and collaborating. And um, I, I, I would not apply for a role that I don't feel personally I can do, you know, with my family. Um, this is something that we've evaluated as a family, with my wife and I, three-year-old didn't have much input, but uh. Um, we're like, yes, I think it makes sense, we're, we're very much interested in this. And um, I, I know the challenges that come with it, I would argue more than any other candidate that you may have. And I'm ready to address those challenges and work with the staff to, to work through those challenges and solve our problems. And um, I, I feel confident in this role to do, to do the work and um, and I'm ready to do it.
I um, I agree, of course, with all your issues, and especially with sustainability and housing and childcare. I, uh, if we can get those. Advanced in five years, I think we're doing well.
Can you give me thoughts?
I'm ready to move on to the Clark thing, I'm done with that, I've only been here two years and I'm done. But, so I, that would be great for me. And I'd like to see the lights, pub cons, who are, wherever you're staying. Cause I think people won't really realize we could do this quite properly. But, you know. And I was over there fishing the other day and it was kind of crappy.
Yeah, the last ones?
Yeah, this is, it's like, we have these grand plans to have it all beautiful. Remember, you remember those plans of all the trees and bathroom, which is coming eventually, but. You know, like, if we were just done with that, moving forward from that whole situation, like, we made, did what we did and moved away from it. And we could be doing so much more better things than wasting our time. Makes sense?
I agree, I can agree.
I would just like to, like, own it and move away from it and that would be huge for me to be spending our time and resources. And money to be doing better things with Frasier than wrapping with her.
Trust me, all the staffs would do.
Makes sense?
It does make sense, and the master plan is great for the, for that, that's why I included it and what I think are critical, you know.
Like art showroom, park, and it's, all of it's right there.
That's something I've, I've already been kind of thinking through is, I think there's some real opportunities for seasonal staff in the summer to drive for some of the things in our master plan that they can do. And I've already made this discussion with Winter Park, they're going to be hiring some, uh, some staff in the summer as well to work on their parks and build playgrounds. And like, can we collaborate? Cause I think that could be a great one for Frasier and help drive forward a lot of those things that we have outlined in our master plan for that open space.
I mean, besides the obvious, like, you know, daycare, um, all that.
I got. Don't worry, I know you.
That's, alright.
Um, this is probably a late point to, to ask this question, Russell had to answer. So you're just listening this morning and some staff. Um, there's, there's a little bit of a perception that you're maybe conflict diverse a little bit. Why don't you talk about your approach to conflict, what you think about that? And I think a lot of times you think about it in the developer situation, well, I know, I didn't handle this developer thing. Talked about that, I've heard about that now for three or four years, like.
More than that, that's all I know what they think about when they think about the town.
So I, I don't want it to be about that necessarily, but I'm like, conflict, like, you, are these staff are your friends, right? These are people you have been around now for a few years. Uh, you know, talk a little bit about, you know, Michael and, and, and conflict when it comes up.
So I think it's very similar in the situations where you have someone coming and steaming into your office, which is not new to me. Um, happens all the time where there's a, it can be a resident, it can be a guest, and it can be a staff member. Um, the main thing that I, that I try to encourage people to do is come talk to me, let me hear what's going on. And it's the same type of deal with the development community, tell me what's, tell me what your thoughts are, tell me your perspective. Um, let me, let me process it for a little bit, I don't ever make decisions on the spot. Um, I want to think through it, I want to, I want to talk to the department head about that situation, that there's an issue with staff. Um, and then trying to work through of, of what are the, what are the options for the staff member? Uh, did he cross the line and he needs to be removed, he or she needs to be removed? Um, are there opportunities where they're willing to work through some different things to increase maybe a skill set? Or um, improve the safety that's needed or certain hazardous types of things that we do inherently with the town? Um, or do we need to, you know, see if we need to remove the staff member? Uh, I'm, I'm always happy to receive that and then follow up with that individual. I don't have a problem with conflict, I've dealt about conflicts, um. I uh, I've learned just to be calm, I've had people come in jumping up and down, very upset about things. I'm very good at, you know, giving them the attention they need, listening to their issues. Um, and then typically it's something along like, thank you for, for letting me know about this. Um, I'm going to look into it and uh, and I'll follow up with you, we'll have a discussion later after I've looked into this a little bit. Um, you know, you don't want to lose people here, you don't want to lose staff, I think there's often ways where you can. Look at retaining people because it is very difficult to replace people here. Um, we have people who have been here for a long time, we've got some staff members, yeah, more than three or four or five that have been here for ten plus years. Um, and it's great, you don't want to lose that historical knowledge, that foundational knowledge. But honestly, when it comes down to it and you ask them, do you want to work here still? We're, we're trying to address your concerns within reason and uh, comes down, you, you still want to work here or do you want to go do something else? And um, it can be that conversation, it can be like you cross the line conversation and here's your benefits for the next three months as you leave. Um, don't have a problem having candid conversations with people, uh, but I do prefer more of that, you know. Let's see if we, if there's an option to work through something, um, and it's just like working with the public. Provide opportunities to get feedback, you know, put out that survey through human resources. You know, every so often throughout the year to just to see where we're at, see if there's any bubbling um, aggression being built up somewhere that you're not aware of. And again, it comes back to maintaining relationships with staff, the department heads, with the local community and stakeholders. So that you're not being caught off guard by something that's maybe a torpedo under the water that maybe you didn't see. It's good to know what's coming at you, especially when you want to keep the board informed and your mayor informed of what issues are coming down the pipeline.
Great, thank you for, for addressing that, any other closing questions or comments? Um, Michael? I'm just worried, have we had any um, voluntary turnover? After what was last, was it last summer, when did all that happen? We have much turnover to them staff?
Right. Um, yeah, and that, you, you, you're asking kind of what caused that or?
Well, no, I'm, I'm, after uh, Catherine left and. That, that sort of phase and then able to hire up to a hundred percent. That we had new staff turnover and if so, what, what were the issues, I mean, voluntary staff turnover, not involuntary.
So I know during that phase, there was one of those staff members that was honestly, didn't want to, um. I, it's a small town, I want to be kind of set of people, um. There was uh, they didn't want to go through the process of trying to address the issues. Um, all over again. Um, and um, without feeling like they were supported. Um, I think there were some different personality things going on and just honestly. Um, people were just ready to, to make their correct, their next career move, um, and it was kind of overdue. Um, it's very, it's important to see the skill set that people can bring to the table for the town. But also how it can impact the culture as well and um, and there were some conflicts there as well. Um. When there's, when someone comes to you, again, the slipper opportunities, like, how can we, can we keep you? Does it make sense to keep you or are you, are you ready to move on? Do you want to keep working for the town? Like, you know, what do you want to do? And it's uh, if you have the opportunity to keep somebody, great, especially when they're bringing a skill set and they're complementing the culture and they fit well with the organization. You want to keep those people, um. It's not always the case, I guess, is a way to say that and um, and we've worked through that churn. Uh, we have that new public works director, um, Lucas, who was working utility side has stepped up. Um, for Alice's position, I think he's been doing a tremendous job, even his team has been saying that. Um, so it was a challenge going through that, that churn and losing some of those people, but I think we bounced back really well. Um, I still think we have some challenges with our planning, um, that we need to work through and really evaluate. And um. I mean, it's, it's really just seeing where we are and continuing to grow and learn with the organization. It's the best address the needs of the community and those change of retirement.
I think that's good, go ahead.
Three words for our culture, there's C C R culture. I'm like in the workplace and it's at, one of the town and the.
Um.
Two.
Serve. Uh, servant?
Service.
Um, and um. Humor. I had a third one first, I would say there want to be, you know, integrity.
Yeah.
I think it's important and I think everyone here at the industry is tired.
Good, and we get to your question, yeah, your question, I think, without getting into too HR, touchy stuff, is that okay? Yeah, yeah.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of uh, three equipment operators who were hired in twenty-two, but all of the first six months, was that?
In twenty-twenty-two?
That's what's in, in Ed's article and C M L.
Okay, um. Reason Street operators.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right, okay.
They don't have to go into that, I just.
Right, so um, again, there were some things bubbling up underneath the surface. Um, that was creating some issues with, within our staff, um, and. Without getting too personal, I, a lot of times when people, honestly, when they, when they leave a good placement, empowered of employment with good benefits. You know, we pay, we try to pay well, try to be competitive, we try to create a, a lighthearted environment with some humors and kindness. Um, and it's uh, sometimes people just, you know, they may want to look to do other things. Cause I think a lot of individuals have been here for a long time and um, I think they're just looking for a change. And you're going to have churn in the future and it's just, you know, trying to prevent it where, where we can. And then learning how to really attract the talent that we need to really do good things here.
Actually, one thing I like that I'm seeing is what, whether or not Michael's chosen or not, I, I like the way that you guys are talking to each other. Uh, and, and I think your ability to answer sort of frankly, maybe some things, some questions that have been asked or discussions that they haven't gone on. So I think that's a very positive thing that's, that speaks well.
Comfortable around myself, like the staff would be.
Yeah. Um, one parenthetical before we go, and we are, I think we've hit your full time a lot in here. And I'll just say this from, from my experience and I often recommend to, to, to candidates who are shifting from one job to another, usually it's from one entity to another. And I say, there's a very rare time in your life when you leave a job before you start another job. Usually you're moving up to something that you don't have any commitments. Uh, and I often say, that's a really good time to take the vacation that you've never been, never been able to take. Uh, or just take a break away and oftentimes I watch people just go, no, I'm so eager to start that. And like, all of those problems will be waiting for you. If you don't think that, so I'm going to say this in front of the board because I think it's important and you're coming, it's a little different when you're in the same organization. But in terms of you leave and whatnot, but i- if you are chosen for this, I would highly recommend. That you let Ed work as long as he can and you take some time with your family. Uh, we're going to the desert world, good, good, I, and whatever, whatever personal time you take. Because uh, if, if you do move from one position to another and, and there, there would be, it'll be a steamroller and you know that. Um, but. And you know that, um, but it's really important for you to 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 take whatever mental break you need to do, how you need to do it. In the time and you need to give them permission. Then ship here, yeah, so I agree, thanks for that. Yeah, it's important, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Break for dinner and come back.
At seven.
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 Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we will continue now with the interviews. Interview of our third candidate, Guy Patterson. I'm gonna take it.
Yeah, in in the interest of sort of keeping things moving, they asked me to ask the question, so. And you guys have follow-ups, obviously, so. Guy, can you provide a brief summary of your education work experience and how those would inform your role as a greater town manager? Sure, yeah. First of all, thank you. I have been given the opportunity to be there, it's really cool. And uh we get about an hour with each other, so I know we're gonna cover some things in the interview and there's other things I want to cover, so hopefully at the end we'll get to be able to touch on some things. I'm an ICMA credential manager, and I'm not sure if everybody knows what that means, ICMA is International City County Managers Association. To be credentialed means you've done minimum of seven years, you have an advanced degree in management. You are peer reviewed for your ethics. And you have dedicated yourself to forty hours a year of continuing education. There's about fifteen hundred of us. Worldwide, which will give me absolutely nothing at the bar, but in my industry, it is kind of the standard. I have a master's in public administration from University of Colorado Denver. I've only worked in Colorado. So I've had lots of experiences dealing with home rules statutory. I am pretty up to speed on all the court cases and all the statutes. That pertain to uh management of municipality. I've worked on the affordable housing issue often. I've done a lot of stuff in the Intermountain area. Worked on a lot of community communities, done a lot of developments, so I have a lot of exposure to one of your guys' biggest issues. I've got a lot of development experience and the biggest one probably is. I was retained by the town of Minturn on the Battle Mountain Project to be the project manager for the town. And if you guys don't know what that development is, it was a five thousand acre annexation, was the largest annexation in the state. Development of a private ski area, two private golf courses, seventeen hundred residential units, remediation, the super fund site. Very complicated water sewer issues, um, and I did that run two and a half, three years. It's a pretty contentious. Development, you you know a lot about it, John. And a ton of money involved in that. Woo, there's a lot of money in that. I've worked in town in Quebec where I had sole responsibility for putting together all the regulations for marijuana. At one point in time, I've sat on QQ at Northwest Cog. I was a senior agent, the assistant minority leader in the house, uh, state of Colorado. Developed broadband in Hudson. Uh, where we developed a program where it went past ninety nine percent aggressance. And it was all paid for free to the taxpayer. Uh, we combined the first grant issued by the state for broadband. And when oil well, it started producing early and we got revenues off that matched them. And we own it, we leased it out, so we're one of the, I think, the only one, the state actually that actually owns the broadband middle mile. Um, and doesn't have debt. Either it's the private company that owns it. Or I mean, it's probably he's gone into debt like four columns long month of places. Gosh, what else have I done? One of the interesting things that really informs me kind of interestingly in jobs manager is I own the laundromat. I built and owned and operated an unattended laundromat in Avon. And it gave me a totally different view of the interaction with small government because I was sitting across the table now. From government, I mean, you you own storefront business, right? Couple, you know. So building permits and taxes and getting a response to questions and that interaction between. Small business and the government. Really changed how I'm informed about how I do my job. So for instance, when I went to Hudson, one of the first things I did is completely redid their whole permit system. So that we went through every permit, talked about them and made sure actually jive with the code. What we found out is over years, they just ripped off certain applications from other towns. None of them was legal, like we were asking for stuff that wasn't in the code. We changed how we responded to questions. We did some training on kind of customer service aspects, but that really. It it's, I was really surprised at how that informs my decision being small town manager, dealing with business and. You know, the clock is always ticking in business and they do need some responses and you do try to. Like I said, I'm a Colorado native. Uh, I am a very active hiker, biker, skier. I. Let's see, I drive a Toyota four runner with a cracked windshield. That makes me Coloradoan. I have my boots custom built for me from the lab, so that's where I get my equipment. That's kind of me in the nuts. I've got very weird ankles and I almost had to kind of give up. So I did sure feet. And I did not like the process. It looks like I actually used three piece boots or two piece boot and it really saved my skin. Um, plus I blow my ankles and back holes and veil, so I just need, I'm a tender skier than this. That's kind of me in a nutshell.
Great, so um why why is Fraser right for you now and why why are you good at this role? Will you bring them with others? Why not?
Well, I bring a ton of experience in the Intermountain Corps and a lot of resorts. And a lot of development experience and I think um that is something that can only help and influence position. I bring a lot of background. Working with the funding and the regulation part of water and sewer, you know, obviously I'm not a licensed operator, but. For years and years and years, it is how do we pay for USD day loans? Um, how do we find people operating those types of things? So I have a lot of experience in that. I look at Frasier. First of all, I applied for this job a year and a half ago. I I pulled myself out because there's some things happening in my life that it wasn't the right time. This is a great time. It fits me professionally, but it fits me personally. I'm happiest at altitude. Like, I really do enjoy the mountains. I really do enjoy um kind of resort setting. As weird as that seems, I don't mind fighting I seventy, although everybody has a love hate, love hate, hate relationship. Um, and for invite, I'm returning home on Sunday. I see tremendous assets in this community. It seems to me that there is, this is a point in time when there may be some changes happening. You have an affordable housing issue that you're dealing with. But we talked about this this morning. Name me another community in the state of Colorado that has the assets you guys have. You have a river that's a half block from your downtown. You have a major ski area that's a major draw. I'm actually particularly interested in the rail stop. You have a major highway that runs through your town, which is obviously double as sore. No place else in the state has that, that already hasn't gone through a lot of things. Sometimes it treated them well, sometimes it didn't treat them well. Sometimes they sold their soul and became soulless. Um, other times they missed out on real opportunities to develop. You know, I did a lot of work at Minturn. One of the things I was was the uh executive director of the Midtown Community Fund where we threw concerts and we had. Really gardens and dinners and raised funds for uh those less fortunate. Um, and it was true sense of community and this kind of reminds me of Minturn where it's a little bit funky, you know, you got your own vibe going on. Um, and I really like that. I like that kind of soul and it would be great to be part of. I'm looking to land somewhere. For a good long time. I'm at my point in my career where. Um, I want to be someplace and it's gotta be Colorado. I was a finalist for Winslow, Arizona. This uh late summer. Uh, I took the interview, I went down there, I liked the board. I thought the board was really cool. Fifty million dollar budget, a hundred employees, whatever. And I just realized that I would be spending every single day thinking about comeback, however. I've never left, so I think this is one of the best jobs in the state I've seen in years.
I want you to describe your your management or leadership style, if you if you have a philosophy or a style and. And especially regarding sort of staff and board.
Uh, the beatings will continue till morale improves. I um. Have a goals and focus, so that is part of how I manage. As we do set up goals, they are defined, especially on the staff. We do have routine that we develop uh that we adhere to, that makes the process of staff doing their job work. I trust staff. I want staff to be creative. I want them to take ownership. I want them to come to the table with ideas and suggestions. I do have an open door policy. Um, I was nominated manager of the year in in twenty one by my staff, which blew me away. I did not win. Um, but it blew me away and when they did the nominating thing, I I read it. Um, and it basically said, guy wants you to do your job. He's gonna train you. He's not gonna leave you out there alone. And we had this phrase, embrace the cork. And what that meant was everybody was encouraged to be themselves. Do your job, do it honestly, morally, on time and in budget. Um, and other than that, I want you to feel very free as an employee. To help solve the problems, specifically when I have to hire department heads and I'm working with departments. Because that's kind of the branch that comes down and that filtrates into the other staff. I know this is a small staff, but I still work in that way. But I want to really encourage them to run their own shop. And we're always communicating. I'm always walking around. I'm always going to people's offices. I'm always going off site. So it's not just like, oh, work is gonna be awful and I I'm out there and I'm saying, how's it going? Dealing with the board, so I am the chief staff member of the board. Okay, it is my job to give you value neutral information in a timely and accurate manner so you can make decisions that you need to make. For the best of your community. Um, I do not sugarcoat things. Uh, I have a saying and I said it earlier today, bad news does not smell better with age. There's something wrong, I'm going to tell you. If it has to be addressed in an executive session, you do so. That's why I have executive session laws. When I make presentations and when you get information, like I said, it is value neutral. I do not put my finger, my thumb on the scale. Um, I learned a long, 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 long time ago in this career, I am not the eighth elected. And that's very important. There is that dividing mark. Um, my job is to get you issues in timely manner, give you good information, and then I need direction from you. I'm going to ask for yes, no, are we doing this? I'm going to ask that for you because I do need consensus to do my job. I also want to work with you in a way that works best for you. So another thing that I learned in my career is. I touch base with councils, especially after elections or after there's new people coming on or. See how you want to be communicated with, what works best for you. For example, one board may say, just go through the mayor and look mayor know the mayor will. Some of the day to day mission type stuff. Other councils and boards have said, we all need to know, so you all need to, you need to communicate with all of us. So those types of things on how it functions best um as your chief staff person. You are there representing the community. You are here to make decisions. You can only make decisions with the best and most accurate information is my job. Um, to use my skills and my background and the staff's job to funnel that up to you. Um, not hide things from you. I have a saying, I play it where it lays. And uh that is kind of how I interact up and down the chain. This is an interesting position because on one hand, you are representation of labor. On the other hand, you're a representation of management. When push comes to shove, this job is the representation of management. That said. It is an interesting folk folk report in that relationship. It's a small town. It's a small staff. There's people wearing hats. There's people busting their butt. You know, you guys have seen it for a year and a half with your staff, working hard. Um, so you just kind of try to get that all much together in a small town, but I do believe in being a professional administrator.
What role should the manager have with the community, with community members?
You know, what are the largest rules you play with community members? First of all, you you. You do your business so that everybody is free to see, right? You know, I don't hide things and, you know, any document that I provide, I'm. More, I understand it's gonna be seen by newspapers and citizens and, you know, hypothetically, everybody. The rule I see interacting with citizens mostly is that of kind of educate. Where they come and they say, I don't like this. Why is this this way? And I spend a lot of time with citizens saying, let me explain to you. Let me let me tell you why it's this way. Now, it may be clunky. It may not be fair. You may feel that you have the short end of the stick. But I'm gonna be honest with you as to why that's happened that way. And if I don't know, I'll actually go look it up and come back and talk to you. You know, you sometimes get accosted at dinner, cost its wrong word, come and say hello. And they want to take up your time. I think it's okay as a manager to say. I'm just trying to get a meal, but I would love to talk to you, but you can't be rude. You can't be dismissive because they are paying your salary. It's an interesting dynamic because you and the staff are paid for by tax dollars. And that does create this interesting dynamic sometimes in cities. But I listen to everyone, even the cranks. I've had more than one occasion where that person's just cranking your. And I'll actually sit and listen to that person and that person actually has a really good idea that I've actually taken the council and said, we might want to look at this. You just give people the time of day, you listen to them, you treat everybody with respect. But I do think it's okay to carve out some of your personal time. I don't, the example I used uh today was if I see the manager of city market out to dinner, I don't want to go interrupt that person for half an hour about the apples. There's a time and a place and I would feel perfectly comfortable. I think that person's in the right to say. Can we talk about this another time? I don't want to talk to you, but maybe not right now is the time. I think people respect that. Uh, by and large, but I think at some point in time, if I said, I couldn't talk to you in the store, they'd be fine. I'm fine with that too. But I do want to be open and I do want to talk to people and just as I'm open and honest with the council and the staff. I'm open and honest with them. Sometimes it's just, I've taken down the code. Or I've put the code up on on a screen and I've read it to them. See that the code says that changed in two thousand and three, it's been this way for nineteen years. Well, I don't like it. I could see how in your particular case, I was kind of screwed down that one. Um, and and you brought up some really good things to think about and then maybe you can take that out of the line and have a conversation.
Good, thank you, Guy. What uh so what issues are you aware of, you know, in your research of Frasier and and? You have any thoughts on how to approach said issues?
Um, actually, English.
Yeah.
If you just want to.
Go for it, yeah.
It it is things that I kind of saw that um you've been talking about, that I saw. Um, it's kind of big and small. Um, I'll just go through some of your. You have the affordable housing issue and hopefully that's something we're gonna get and talk to in detail here in a few minutes. Um, I've noticed you have the comparable instant land use plan. I think that's budgeted for this coming year. Get that done. That is something that I think needs to be a priority because that is a document that you knew the conversations. About the future and development. It spurs the conversation at the local level and then it's something you kind of hang your hat on when you're dealing with developers. I don't think, you may need a transportation master plan, but at least um have roads and sidewalks and right away inventory. So you can have a new CIP. That's one of the documents I handed out. This is what we had in Hudson. And if you see it as every single road and the condition it's in and the work. And so it really allows you to just in one space, look and say, okay, we have these roads coming up. It's a total of three thousand feet. Um, and then we got one other section road, it's three thousand feet, so we're gonna have to budget for six or seven thousand feet in the next year. It's just a tool to help you, it's a pretty simple tool, uh, to help you manage long term money issues. Always keeping an eye on that one percent sales tax for transportation and how it's just nipping away and dipping away and dipping. Perform a review of the Frasier Economic Development Policy that I guess kind of went away. Um, that was adopted in February twenty nineteen and the deep restriction purchase program. Um, take a look at that and see if there's anything that needs revamping reconsideration. I know one of them's relatively new, one is not working anymore. But those are things you've tried and I think just taking a blush of that would be helpful. Um, you have a continued work on wastewater infiltration. That's an issue that I've dealt with, I've actually dealt with that in a few other places. You have the funds, uh, and enact any other pressing water and wastewater issues identified in the various reports. Um, along with that, in one report, you had about two point eight million dollars identified issues. Four hundred thousand of that was identified as kind of the town's responsibility. The remaining balance was some stuff that developers were supposed to take care of. So along with that, and I would do this anyway, would be back and. Go review all the current development agreements, the annexation agreements, the P Ds that you have within developments that you're interacting with, even if they're relatively dormant. Water and sewer fees have not increased for the last several years. I understand that there is, um, a budget set aside, it's been funded. Um, to do a water wastewater impact fee and rate study, I think that's very important, and I think that's something that needs to get done. Get done this year in time to get enacted in, in at least next year's budget. I. I understand you do your water billing quarterly. Instead of monthly. That may be something you look at because you're losing interest. Right, so instead of, and now that you've moved to an online platform. Where more and more people are going to be going and it's easier for the part time homeowner and everything to pay on that. You may want to consider going monthly, it'll. I know interest rates have shrunk, they're going back up a little bit, but that's one thing where you make, make a few bucks. An overall, uh, capital improvement plan for both your tax entities. Uh, water wastewater roads sidewalks rolling stock, so we just kind of have it in one place, I know you kind of have it in reports and here and there. More in one place so that is, it is plug and play in some of your budget conversations and it's more centered and can be seen. Looking at the impact fees outside of water and sewer, so some of your development fees. In, impact fees from development. Your building codes are twenty fifteen. I think. You may want to take a look at upgrading those to at least twenty eighteen. I would. Be hesitant about going up to the absolute newest component. The reason is, is they issue these codes nationwide, or internationally, so they say. Sure, many people, Karat, you're following him, but. And they always have quirks. So you let them work through the system for a year or two or three. And then organizations will start putting out information about what works and doesn't work in the code. And then you can incorporate that into your town code. Um, so like we moved, uh, Hudson up to twenty eighteen. I mean, twenty eighteen is not a bad code, people are getting their head around it. One thing I noticed, and it's not a huge deal, but something we want to do with. You have. Budget funds in your town code. Um, and so I spoke to a friend of mine who does, uh, municipal finance. And I spoke to an auditor about this. You have funds that are in your code, but not in your budget. And you have funds in your budget that aren't in your code. So as far as the audit, that's not a huge deal, you're just monitoring the money under a state audit, it doesn't affect it. But from a legal perspective, it's just a belt and suspenders thing to be want to tighten up. Not in code, but in the budget, you have restricted revenue fund, capital asset fund. The cousins cousins. Branch open space fund and the wastewater fund. And then in code but not in the budget, you have the Fraser River Enhancement Project Fund and the Peterson Trust Fund. So just kind of harmonizing that, I think the code's given in two thousand and five. Rebecca looks like you did recodification in two thousand and five. Upgrade of public work facilities. That one's been around for a little while, but it's something that's going to have to be addressed, I understand there's some. Considerations on how to make that happen. Um, you guys are starting to work, I found out today on a municipal water efficiency plan, make sure that is filed with Colorado, Colorado Water Conservation Board. Because that's what allows you now to start getting into revolving funds for, um, taking out loans. Address online security issues with the town, if you haven't done it already, I have been in the municipality where we got held hostage. It cost us tens of thousands of dollars and it almost, what they did is they got into police files. So along with the cost of paying ransom to these people in Eastern. Wherever they were. It almost cost us to have to break these seven or eight hundred, uh, police records, so you know what a break is. Puts the whole investigation suspicion. And then broadband is something that may. Take more of a center stage as a conversation, more in the conversation, not just because I had success doing it, but. What I found out doing is broadband is now commonly kind of considered utility. Like water wastewater electricity broadband, it's kind of expected, it's hard doing in a mountain area, I know. It's something that needs generally state funding to help it happen. Um, I know there's medical facilities coming in, so that can help. Those are some of the things I've seen in, in my. Work that are big and small issues. Um, but some things to touch on.
Start by interacting with neighboring communities. You know, here's the interesting thing.
I was a little town called Tindon. Tindon is, if you know Fort Collins, it's directly across I twenty five, about a driver to seven iron. Um, when I was there in town, about three hundred and fifty people, Fort Collins was the big liar. They were absolute war with Fort Collins, absolute war with the county over special districts. Um, or renewal authorities actually in that one. When I went to the back, they were absolutely at war with the county, the county hated them so much. That they needed them a bridge that goes over the Colorado River. It was like a hundred and fifty yard long bridge, you know how expensive and hard it is to maintain a bridge over a major. River, that's costly, they would just get to, they put signs up that says county services in here, they would just come and pick up their flowers in winter time. What I always get across to boards is when you're done with your term. And maybe you moved on or passed on, who got it, whatever it is. Your community is still neighbors with Winter Park, still in Grand County and still at the road to Grand. So it doesn't make sense to pee on each other's shoes all the time. Yeah, you're going to have disagreements. You got to work through those disagreements, and yeah, you're going to have different interests, you're going to have to make those different interests fit together. Sometimes you're going to have very common interests, and it really makes sense to work together. Obviously, you know, your, your sewer, your water, some of those things, um. It's a case by case basis, but never hit the point where you're burning bridges and just causing consternation. And lawsuits just because it's got a personal, which I've seen more times than I. Care to know. And so I've done plenty of interactions with other communities. Um, and there's plenty of conversations I've had with county commissioners and other municipalities in the state. And it's, this doesn't work for us right now. We do have this issue that we can work. Um, and you try to work where you can, you try to be disagreeable, being disagreeable, or you can't. Um, one of my references is a C dot regional, um, engineer. And so we worked for about three and a half years on a project, a major intersection project in Hudson. Where there's plenty of times where it's like you and I get along fine, my business card has to have a long talk with your business card. That's, that's how I've seen it best work.
Check yours a little bit, uh, sales tax income, um. Talk about developing a diverse revenue stream and, and, and generally how do you engage the public in, in economic development?
So, you know, it's, um. Obviously you have limitations, if you go to the ballot, you have limitations of what an elected board can do. And then you, you try to shy away from a staff level of getting into those kind of points and conversations. That said, um, I have worked in several communities where we have done a hotel tax. Um, we did recreational marijuana, like I said, in the back. Um, in Hudson, we were working on, um. The community Hudson is about half an hour northeast of downtown Denver. Um, there's a bunch of other small communities. Their whole game was chasing rooftops. Well, we had an intersection of fifty two and fifty two went into Boulder in seventy six, which is a major highway. Right a hundred yards off that corner, which is most traveled corner in that area, we own ten acres. So what we were looking at doing is while everybody else was chasing rooftops. We were negotiating with King Supers to build the groceries. And while they were chasing rooftops and they need more people in, they're having to get more services, which means the tax base has to expand and they're getting this vicious loop. We were going the other way where we weren't going to expand so much, so much of the population. But we were going to increase our sales tax, because we're about seventy five, eighty percent of property tax, we're going to expand our sales tax and be their vendor. So. When you're looking at, um, these issues, and then when I was in the, I was in politics before I got in this. My first job was to pass a sixty two million dollar bond issued to build a new high school in Green. So I got a really good view of what it's like to. Issue bonds, how they run the campaign of it, what their vested interest is, um, some of the legal things that they went through, and that was really high. Um, so I've kind of seen it from both sides. Interacting with the citizens obviously is you have to make a case, you can't do that at public hearings. And at this, uh, conversation. And then it really is reliant on. Um, board members, if they're interested in citizens, they do have to carry some of the water in that, because you are limited to what you can do. But if it's a referred and not an initiative. That education to the citizenry starts immediately upon starting to investigate the issue, whatever it may be. Uh, because you are referring it to the citizens to put it on the ballot, so you're going to have several conversations. And those conversations can be used as the base to get information out of the citizens and bring them along relatively slowly instead of, it's on the ballot. They've actually seen it have lots of conversations over the course of months, that's kind of one of the tricks you can use to getting information.
So. You've mentioned a couple of different times, uh, it touched on, I should say, about major land use development negotiations, you know, conservation easements, annexation, subdivision. Kind of experience that we had with those, I mean, you mentioned Battle Mountain. And then you're talking about Hudson a little bit, but, uh, other than those things you've already got over.
Um, so I was vice chair of the Avon Planning Zone Commission. Um, and that was at a time when we were rewriting some of the downtown use. So that was a really in-depth look. At land use. In terms of a resort community trying to stay competitive in a market mix. So it's much different than just the normal view of land use. It was policy designed to. Help in, in, in their particular case. They thought they competed against, not necessarily Breckenridge, they thought they competed against the South of France. Um, and, and that was their mindset. Okay, that's fine, um, I think there's some validity to that. But it, because you know, we know where some of our money and our visitors come from. Um, but it gave me a really good insight into, from a policy point of view, and especially in resort communities. Um, what you're looking like when you're setting land use as policy. Then you have, um, all the times. I've dealt with small subdivisions and dormant subdivisions where the letter, uh, credit has lapsed. So we couldn't hook up sewer in small towns, we had to work for that. Um, large scale developments, we had an annexation being considered in Hudson. And this is kind of originally why they hired me for the position. This was going to be. Kind of out of the plains. And it was going to be ten thousand units to build out thirty thousand residents. And so we went through the whole process and. They pulled their annexation request into a different town, because we weren't happy with what they were telling us about why. So again, all these discussions you have, you learn. What the town is looking for and what the town needs and who should be paying for. Um, whether again, it's setting policy in the, in the code or negotiating with developer. The first negotiation I did with Walmart when I was thirty four in Tindon. Negotiating with Walmart, what am I doing here? Um, but what we realized in that particular case is they wanted money spit off for, um, improvements at the intersection. They were going to use a sales tax receipt to do that, what I said is. Um, from the get-go, both the town and Walmart are going to realize sales tax. We're not giving up the sales tax for twenty years, so that you guys can make your improvements. Cause I learned that Walmarts move about every even ten to twenty years. So I said, from the get-go, we're going to realize sales. So those are just kind of things that you pick up, uh, along the way, so I've had a lot of experiences, not just Battle Mountain. Um, and I've seen it from being a citizen and sits on the board to being somebody who's sitting across the table.
Yeah. Did that get to that further question, guys, let me follow up on the land use stuff.
You didn't mention the metro districts.
So yes, we, uh, especially in Battle Mountain, we created several districts, we actually can. Uh, created a taxing district on top of the mountain, that's where the scary houses were going to be, that was going to actually feed and take care of downtown Minter. Um, we have dealt with several metro districts, Hudson had a few metro districts that I adopted. One time we had about every citizen in that district come to us, because they didn't realize the associated tax with the district and they thought we were responsible for it, we said no. Within those eighty pages that you signed, you said you agreed to pay those taxes. We have, uh, dealt, I dealt with a small metro district out in Little Town, tobacco, five hundred people. And then I've also done special district or rural authority.
You, you touched on attainable housing or workforce housing, it's number one priority here, it's your experience with it. Um, and then are you familiar with the, the proposition one twenty three and, and if so, how might you leverage that?
Well, one twenty three is welcome, because the state's finally opening their eyes and realizing that they've got to take care of the situation, especially in mountain downs, but it's not just mountain. Um, there was, there's almost every community is being touched by it in the state. Um, but yeah, I, I mean, it's, it is going to. Help communities get over that. Initial hump of acquisition of land, um, not having to give up. Fees or, or you know, um, giving lay cash and blue requirements for water, whatever. Um, I think it's going to help. Working in the mountains and working in the towns I've worked in, uh, and Lake County. Affordable housing has always been an issue. Um, and so I spent a lot of time. Uh, reviewing your situation with affordable housing. I have seen so many reports come and go. I've seen so many citizens banding together and then dissipating, I've seen councils, um. Start on it and then it falls apart. And I've seen a lot of ways to skin the cat. When I look at the situation here in Fris. What I see. Rebecca, I watched a video this summer when you were council meetings and you were getting an update on the report from the new regional housing board. Right? And one of the recommendations they made was, and I'm not trying to be flip here, and I don't want this, this is true, one of the recommendations was build more houses. I think that's a known no. What I see and where I think Fraser is right now is. Fraser needs to answer four questions. The first question. How many units is Fraser going to be responsible for getting built? And I know that you are working in a regional issue. That there's different push and pull factors, and there's different players that have different needs for affordable housing. I think Fraser needs to make a decision on how many units it feels it's going to be responsible for to be part of the solution. The second question is, what is the breakdown of rental versus ownership in that number? The third question is, where on the A M I spectrum do you need those units to fall? And the fourth question is, what is the timeline for getting this done? If you can get through those four questions and have an honest debate about it and come up with answers that you have consensus on. Which may be hard to do, it may take a little while, but if you can get to there, then you unlock several other discussions that are absolutely critical. To your town outside of affordable housing. So it allows you to have a discussion on your current capacity for your infrastructure, water and sewer, and what needs you're going to have with all these new units coming on. It's going to allow you to have, um, a discussion about potential funding. Um, mechanisms that you may choose to participate in, and I know Ed gave you a memo of some. Ways to do this, um, waylaying your, your PIF fees and impact fees and, um, service extension fees and stuff like that. Um, it allows you to have a serious discussion about special districts. Allows you to have a serious discussion about what debt load you may consider. To replenish the money that you give up. For PIF when you have to service your water and sewer plants. And how much, um, or if you decide to issue debt for these particular projects. So it allows you, since you know the parameters of where you're at, allows you to have those discussions. And allows you to have a really serious discussion about short-term rentals. Short-term rentals, as we know, and this is pretty universal in the intermountain area, there's that competition between the availability of housing, short-term rentals. The availability of housing, long-term. Right? But if you know a scope of the short-term rental and how far you guys are willing to go as a community. Then you can have a more honest discussion about that, because it's not just open-ended. I've seen so many of these discussions remain open-ended, so another document that I have, um. This housing needs assessment, this came out of Chatham County, I think twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, and this was. This housing needs assessment, this came out of Chatham County, I think twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, and this was. Cooperation with all the municipalities in the counties. And they got redone in twenty twenty-two. What's important about this and what I want you to see in this document. Is you look at, and they have the three, um. Municipalities that were in the county, Salida, of Ginevista and, um, Pacha Springs. But if you go just to one table. It says rental units needed by AMI through twenty twenty-seven. And then it goes down on the bottom, it gives you the number. It's Salida is going to take care of. When they're going to do it. So finding that number. Can be a difficult exercise, but it is an exercise that you can accomplish. And, and I wanted to show you this because this really spurred discussions. Uh, in Chatham County, it really. Allowed them to focus in on what they were wanting to do. You know, I said, when I got to JP, the mayor, when I got to slide of the mayor had this working group. And there's a developer is on the group saying, well, if you just got away with impacting these for parks and if you just let all the parking stuff go, we could. We can afford to build. I looked at bear and I said, do you wanna be the first mayor in Salida that defunds parks? Do you wanna be the first mayor in Salida that pushes all the parking out on your streets and makes it look like a parking lot? That's why you have those in there. But if you know how much you need. Then it allows you to have some really frank and honest discussions that can give you that. So from my background and from what I've seen, um, that's where I think you guys are on the issue. And I'm hoping that rings with you guys, but when I was involved in Chatham County, when they gave these targeted numbers. Um, and then like they've redone them a little bit. These are a little different than what was, you know, five or six years ago. Um. The focus of everybody sharpened to consume. And you may wanna play a role regionally and try to get it sharpened. Or you may wanna step out on your own, but I think. Just saying we need more housing and just throwing spaghetti at the fridge saying, well, let's try all these things. I don't think is beneficial right now, and I think it sets you up for some financial problems in the future. Um, but if you have, and that's part of my job is to look out for the future of the community. Um, and the fiscal responsibility. I think if you can answer those questions, it's gonna, it's gonna move them.
Um. These next three questions, I wanna see which ones are the most important to you guys and kinda keep us moving forward. We're kind of moving towards last fifteen minutes here. Got trails and parks, one, the disaster preparedness or the wastewater ones? Which one's more important to you guys that makes you feel better?
Waste.
Okay. Okay. Yes. Yeah, okay. Um, once you talk about your experience providing, um, oversight of a wastewater treatment plant. A joint-use facility and or a special district.
Okay, um, well, as I, I'll take a step back. As I mentioned today, when I was talking to your staff. Um, I kind of believe very strongly, I call it the three-legged stool. And that is you pay very, very close and special attention and it's always in front of you, water, sewer, boats. You do not have those three things working, it is almost impossible to put any sort of organized civilization on top of that. You cannot do emergency services, there are diminished, commerce is diminished, living, uh, experience is diminished. Economic development is diminished. So I put a great amount of emphasis, it is the least sexy thing that you do. In a municipal world. Um, and it is the most important. So like I said, I've read through, uh, reports. My background is every municipality I've worked at, I've had to deal with these issues. Save for Salida. Salida, actually, before I got there, had a huge big old grant from the state that has a. A water plant that could feed color or sewer plant that could take care of Colorado Springs. Um. But I am well experienced in hiring staff to deal with it. Um, I've dealt with consultants. I have done every considerable study that you can imagine. I've enacted those studies. Um, we have held, it's been part of negotiations given for annexations, development agreements. Um. In, uh, let's see, in Redcliffe, the first job I had. We had ion items bad. Our consultant told us it was same as Canyon City on a rainy day. We're town of five hundred people. Um, and by the way, they put a case coddle plant in backwards. So basically all it did was slow down. The toxic stuff before it hit the Eagle River to remove that. Um. And that was really bad. And we had no money to take care of. Um, so a lot of that was getting money. We dealt with the feds. I dealt with the local, uh, Dan Gibbs who went on to. Uh, be in the state house and be accounting commissioner. At that time, he represented the local. Uh, federal representative and we got them about a half million dollars to get started on that. We eventually got that figured out. Um, when I got to the back, it was for maintenance issue. They just put it off forever and ever and ever. And then they were overloading their plants so badly that they were at that eighty percent cusp. They shouldn't have been. What they needed to do was just basically remove slugs that was in the retaining rods. Uh, so we got that done. And then we, we took it one step further in that particular case. We actually looked, um. We found a farm on the western slope that could take that sludge. Um, for, um. Anyway, they could take it for their farms. That's a little more. Difficult than it seems. You can't be X amount of feet from a river. All these types of things, but they, they took our sols. Um. Hudson, we were, uh, dealing with, um, negotiating with a neighboring. Town that wanted to do a joint facility with us for sewer. We did not feel we had to engage because our sewer plant was about forty percent. They are the town that that development that I was telling you about earlier went to. All of a sudden, they realized they didn't have sewer capacity. So they thought, well, why don't we just join Hudson and? I said, why are we gonna solve your problem? To be frank with you, and I asked the, I remember I asked the public works director, I said, when you went through the sanitation agreement. Did you clarify how they're gonna handle sewer? Well, we thought we could deal with it when we annexed it. Why should my town incur debt? To solve your problem, which would have been a hundred percent. On the other side of the town. Which we were, um, dealing with, uh, Burlington Northern coming in to do a two hundred million dollar, uh, transfer station. We were in active negotiations to do some regional sewer with Lock Buoy. Because, um, that made sense because of the impact that might become in the development. So I've seen a lot of different ways to do it. I have worked in coordination. I have worked, uh, in situations where you're on your own. And I've been in situations where we said, when I'm interested, because it doesn't. Of us.
I think you've established your bona fide in sweat, uh, wastewater there, so. Thank you. Um. You, you've had this experience as a manager in, in, um, areas of limited access to resources or employment, what's really. A case up here in, in Grand County and in, in Frazier, you know. What are your thoughts on, on, um, staff development and retention and how important that is in a, in a place like, like this that's sort of?
Obviously absolutely critical. Do, uh, have the pressing issue of affordable housing. Um. I went to get ribs last night in Winter Park. Guess what? One of the guests, one of the servants was talking about. Wow. Um, so you have that issue. When I got to Hudson, the first thing I did was I tripled the training budget. I invest in staff. There's that thought that, well, if you invest in staff, they're gonna get good at, and they're gonna move on and, and make money elsewhere. What I have found actually is if you invest in them, they're gonna return that investment because they've found a home and they've gotten really good at and they wanna stay there. Second of all, you wanna make sure that you do have a wage that's livable. Um, I try generally with wages to kind of keep up. You know, for instance, with the Boulder Diver CPI, that's been hard recently because inflation's like gone bananas. So it has been more difficult to try to keep up with that, but you make a conscious effort to. Have your staff have a livable wage, at least keep up with the basic cost of inflation. Um. I do like, uh, wages to be, uh, based somewhat on performance. I think that's fair. Uh, but it has to be fair the way it's done. You just can't drop it on them. And I, I work with staff to get that accomplished. Um, one of the things we did in Hudson that was really critical for, we were losing police. We were just rejuvenating a police force there. Um, and we're having trouble keeping people because basically. If you're gonna have it dependent on, you gave up your second paycheck of the month to pay for the dependent in the current chance we had. So we went hunting around and my chief came to me and said, I can't retain people. So we went hunting around. We actually came up with a different system and on the budget was neutral. But it allowed people to kind of have. An amount of money they could use. For their insurance and then some other related benefits. Um, and it didn't cost the town anymore. It took away that part of, we covered. Um. Then, then one hundred percent and then one dependent one hundred percent and then, uh, other dependents in a different rate. Um, it didn't cost the town anymore and that made a world of difference because first of all, it's money back in your pocket, but second of all, it shows a gift. You know, you don't do a job if you're not getting paid, not getting benefits. It's volunteer work. I'm gonna do something else. You know, if you're not getting paid a living wage and if you're not being treated well, you're gonna go work someplace else. So as a manager, it's really critical to invest in your staff and try as best as you can, stay up with those things. It's sometimes it's hard. Sometimes you're gonna look at it and say. We can't, you know, this is where we're at. I'm trying to work on this, can't work on this, but. Um, investing in staff for their training and trying to keep moving wages and getting them the benefits that they deserve. And then not bury them and not get them some management.
Yeah. So, um, so we're getting, getting near the end here. Um, you know, th- this town has had a lot of transition with managers and, and, and. I'll, I'll point out, you know, um, but some of us looking over your, um, your resume, you know. Two and a half years in Hudson and six months to Salida, a year in Lake County, three years in the back. Um. What is the right amount of time for a manager to be in a place and sort of, you know, I think earlier you said, hey, I'd like to be here for a long time, but. Who knows what, how things go, but, but. You know, there's been some short stints. Would you sort of address that? And then, yeah, what is the right amount of time to, to? Be able to really have an impact?
Um. Part of the stints was I made a commitment to live in the mountains. So sometimes it's hard to piece together jobs. So like in the back, they didn't renew my contract. Cause they wanted the husbands, or the, the husband of the mayor, who's an unemployed dirt scraper to have a job. So they wanted to. So I'm running into that. So it was hard scraping together jobs. And so that's why there were other things of working in. You know, it's, uh, nonprofits and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um. You know, you. Serve as long as you're useful. With board, how many times a manager? Um, a great example is Gary Suter, who was manager of the year, manager of the steamboat right now, mentor of mine. He was in, um, Snowmass Village forever. They tapped him on the shoulder one day and said, we don't want you here anymore. You've been there like sixteen years. So we're going a different direction. We don't want you. Um, I know the ICMA code ethic says minimum of two years. Um. And in the, in the two cases where I served under two years, um, one was. Uh, a very serious ethical issue and one was I worked for a board of county commissioners that. After twenty years, they decided they were gonna try a manager and after a year and three months said, now we're running back the way it was. And they agree with me to at least get nature and director. We separated peacefully and it acts my contract. Um. I wanna get through here. I'm at the point in my life. Um, where I can live up here and be happy. Um, cause it'd be nice to be back in the mountains. I understand the mountain lifestyle. I would really like to get through a couple of elections. And I would like to play a role in some of these longer-term projects. To say how long a manager should serve, that's a hard question to ask because it is not up to the manager. Manager plays a role because they have them to. Perform the duties. But. If a manager is communicating with their board, recognizing changes, doesn't get set in their ways, is. Reflective of what the board wants, because that's ultimately what this job is. Then sure, you can serve for a long time.
Yeah.
But if you come in and say, no, we're doing it this way, you're constantly fighting with the board, they're gonna work out that. Right? Right? Um. And I'm. A long time ago, when I was working with some really smart people, they said, you're gonna eventually turn from smart to wise, which is kind of one. So I'm learning what the job of a manager is and how I best serve the elected officials. And, and cognizant of when boards turn over, um, their new priorities changes, but. And I need to reflect that as.
So when would you be available to start? And have you looked at housing?
Sure, I've looked at housing. Housing's difficult. Um, so I would address that is. Just trying to find a couch to crash on for a little while, then get a lease, ultimately, and do you wanna buy?
Yeah.
Okay, um. But if you're going to be in the mountains, you are going to pay a premium, especially in a very tight market that you're in. Here. I think we've all heard the story in Summit County that they hired their affordable housing director. Who came and immediately quit because they couldn't buy a whole lot. That's a good one. So I understand what I'm getting into because I've got into it several times. Um, I would be very happy to start two or three. Uh, weeks before it is scheduled to leave, I think it's at the end of March. There are one or two things I would like to tie up, not business-wise, uh, personal-wise. I'm sorry, I like to have a little time, like have a little time to come up here and look for housing and stuff like that. And then I wanna get in and get started. I don't need. A ton of transition times. I've done these transitions in the board. I understand that'll work.
Yeah.
Um. But yeah, be ready to get going, no later than March three first. Um, sooner that is necessary for this board. I would say somewhere. First or second week of March. That gives about a month or six weeks.
Great. So I wanted to leave a little bit of time, but you said you had, so I, I don't know if you covered all the things you wanted to.
Yeah, I don't know if it's true if it don't.
Um, but yeah, so, uh, in the last six minutes or so, any follow-ups or other questions specific that you wanna add and potentially we will time the guy to.
Those guys, you have, uh, impressive experience and. Can be very knowledgeable, um, and these, this area. I'm just curious why. Why Frazier? You know, what motivates you? To wanna take this job? To me, you almost seem overqualified, but certainly we need that level of experience. So. Why Frazier and why now?
Because this suit you see me wear is the last damn time you can see me wear this suit next time I'm going to legislate.
They don't allow that actually here, right?
Um, it's, I. I, I can't say this enough, I'm sounding corny. I love the noise. Like, I really like this lifestyle. You know, yeah, I lived right below Beaver Creek and. Yeah, you know, we lived in, you know. Living, working, name owner, going to Vale and. You know, when you talk, I can hear your daughters and open. Um. But I was so much more happy in working for Minter. And I get a lot of kind of that same vibe. And I also, I go back to the answer that I gave earlier of. Well, first of all, I've been unemployed for a year by choice. I made a commitment to myself. I've got a lot of experience and I wanna go work in a really good setting where I think I can do good work, but also feeds my soul. I just don't wanna. Right? And I gave you that example was where it's on. Um. But I. Like I said earlier, I see such incredible potential for this community. That it has the resources, that it has some level of comfort to make the decisions it wants to make. And I love to ski. I love to mountain bike. I love to hike. It just feeds my soul. Um, I'm going skiing tomorrow. I gotta make basic passes when I head tomorrow. Um. The lifestyle fits. Proximity to family and friends on the front range fits. Where you guys are in your history and your arc fits. Um. And I'm all about kind of the funky small town. You know, I, I like that. That's a cool place to live. Um, it's, you know, even in, in Vale, the John Pop office as well, but there is an underlying culture there of the working class. And we do all get along and we help each other out. We know each other. Um, but I don't mind small towns. I don't mind working in them and I really like the challenges. And that's just. Without sounding corny, but that's the attitude of the over the weekend. Right, thank you.
Question. You, you addressed, you know, and I answered the short term. Those were two things that. Was too short-term. Jobs was a concern to me. Like the answer.
Okay.
Uh, got more minutes? You can close or ask a question to the board or whatever you see fit, guys.
Um, just a few things. For my management style, um, like I said, I really do believe that we are the staff and board. So I am, um. We, you know, staff meetings are twice a month. That is something that is maintained is the day after the meeting. So if we get information from the board in the meeting. We can immediately start to work on it. We can immediately start working on those issues. Um, like I said, I put an emphasis on the online security. Um. When it comes to your website, I, I like the thought of websites being kind of a central depository of information. Um. One of the things that I've noticed that I would do. Um. Is make sure you guys always get this. Um, full report monthly back in Hudson. We just put it on the website. This is the sixty-page report of every GL code. Um, you guys do have the shared responsibility. This is what I sit down monthly with, with department heads and go through with a red pen. Um, so I watch paintings really closely and so we could work with you is be nice to. Um, so I watch paintings really closely and so we could work with you, because it'd be nice to have a really good finance person. Um, usually when I've gone into places, I've had to kind of a full or partial rebuild on the staff, um, your staff is really cool. And they put a lot of hardness and they've gone through a lot, that's wonderful. Um. I wanted to talk real quickly, the other two documents that I have are examples of my communication with the board. And I think that's important, I don't want to say it's formal, I sometimes want to say it's standardized. So if it is a topic for discussion, I want you to have a memo that covers it completely, it gives you a good basis. Start your discussion on, and then another thing I do, and I've seen this done. Um, when I look back, the agenda is here, sometimes it's done, sometimes it wasn't. To me, I kind of want it done all the time, um, we call it a request for council action, the request for board action. Uh, it's the other document, it has the agenda number, department, who presents it, um, the big one is the fiscal note. And I noticed in some of the the things I've seen staff produce, it's sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not, even if it says NA, that is always there. Um, and I prefer these documents because it allows you to understand and citizens to understand. Um, quickly what's happening, it gives you the exact language for suggested motions. Um, it allows you to see physically what's going on, I try to do get down to the level of what GL goes, it's going to be going and all that. Um, it makes staff really think through what they're putting in front of you. Which is a really cool exercise, sometimes you hate it when you're pinched for time. Um, and then the final thing it does that I find really helpful. Is when you're going back two and three and four years and trying to look up an issue. This is a really great historical piece, if you spend time on the front end, to be able to go back and identify issues on the back. So those are just some of the management things that do um. Sometimes there's little tricks, you know, if we're to go, you're talking about ordinance or something, um, I'll just put the ordinance up on the screen in Word. So you can just go right there and make changes and everybody go, yeah, we like that phrase, and so you you sometimes I've been in places where it's. We've had the experience of now, what were they saying, who said what? Just put it on the board, everybody can see it, take care of it. Um. I'm really happy to be here, I hope I get the job. I think you got a really good staff, I'd love to be part of it. Um, and it would, it seems like an exciting time. Um. Me here, it was cool to come back in the valley, I had been here for years, two or three years. Um, but it's cool to come back and see. So I really, really, really.
Thank you. So uh, the board, the full board, I think, everyone will be listening and give deliberations and then. Follow up with candidates, so it's a little different from sometimes, but now if I could be here today and then I'd be able to all pop, so um. Anything else you would have had about process? Yeah, um. Recording will get posted uh by tomorrow.
Yeah.
And so all that must be in the public domain, um, board will have executive session for discussion on Wednesday, which is making this schedule work.
Very good. Excellent, thank you very much, guy, appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess we can be off record. We're a really good place to be, can I still debate? You're closing too.
Monday, it's Monday.
Monday, Monday.
I'll try to get there at night, so I don't need to push. Um, that's really why I need you to know is I'm hungry. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And tell your staff, the staff thanks.
We're still recording and we do still have one item on the agenda.
Yeah.
Now that we have a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, sorry.
Would you like me to pause the recording?
If you want a five minute, you want, or let me watch your eye in there a second.
It's it's very, it's, I think it's quick.
We're supposed to have public comment before that, yeah.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to make comments?
She's okay.
No.
Okay. Well, then we're back, and then um Rob has a. Discussion and possible action regarding grant application.
Yes, so um, we are uh applying for the transnational housing uh. Grants, it's got a bunch of words in there, but um, basically, this is trying to tap into some of the federal funding that's coming through DOLA. And Department of uh Housing, um. So in the meeting about the grants, um, they were like, I was like, so is this something we can apply for in February? And be considered in March, and they're like, well, it's actually already, everything's already committed, so you should probably get this in by midnight on the thirty first of January, be considered in February. So that's tomorrow, um, so, but it's a big deal, uh, so this is the first of a couple steps. Um, what we're supposed to have is a board resolution um. That authorizes us to apply for the grants and who's going to be the signature authority. Um, but because that needs to go through the public hearing process, you have to be posted for five or ten days. Um, in advance, so this is going to be something that's going to be on the February fifteenth agenda. But I'm getting a placeholder in this letter of commitment to allow us to apply for the grants. Um, if it gets rejected, then we're look everywhere, it will be in the March consideration. Um, but the big piece of this that's really important for the board to understand is this grant requires a twenty five percent match. Um, and we are shooting for the moon right now and asking for ten million dollars. Yeah. Oh, wait, it's like.
Um, that's only.
Two point five million.
Yes, and so this can come through, it could come through cash, it could come through a loan, but it can also come through waiver of fees and other things from the town. Um, and so if we look at building a hundred and forty uh uh affordable units. There might be some market stuff in there, but I exclude that from this idea of if we applied for that. And we put uh the uh plan investment fees for water and sewer into that, that is two point four million right there. So that would be our contribution by waiving those plan investment fees. Now, I don't think that I really want to waive plan investment fees because I really want to have capital projects get done. Um, but we're also looking at applying for other funds to basically pay for capital projects directly. Um, under the strengthening communities grant program. So we're basically saying, okay, yes, we will waive our fees, this is money that's not budgeted right now, it won't come. Be something that we actually utilize until Victoria Village is getting ready to be built. Um, but I would like to look at. I'll let this letter of commitment basically says, yeah, we will find a way to do this. Um, that is, for me, is going to be cost neutral to the town, the other sources of revenue would be. Um, essentially, we with the additional STR fees. Um, that are being collected this year uh under the bedroom fees um. And the capital allocation to the Frasier Housing Authority. Which is this board when they put on that hat, and that's about three hundred thousand dollars. So if we say, hey, we have three hundred thousand dollars this year, and we have something similar in the next couple of years, um, but a scale down to two hundred thousand. Um, this is another way to make up some of that gap, it doesn't have to be all the money at all at once. Um, and so these are a couple ways of looking at this over the long haul. Um, we will look at the Frasier uh Housing Partnership, um, once we get to. The ability, like right now, we're not even going for the loan funds or anything else where they would really want to step down. Um, so this is a big commitment in terms of the letter, um, and it's a risk, and so, but if we. If we, if they say, hey, you're only getting five billion dollars, that's a really good thing, but we don't have to pay as much um. Really, the ask of this grant is. Give us money now so that we can get the horizontal infrastructure in and shave ten million dollars off the final cost of the project. So that we can meet those really low thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent AMI targets that we really want. Um, overall. So, that is the question, um, with this uh resolution to or. The resolution motion.
It's a resolution.
Uh, if the resolution to uh have Philip sign this letter of consent or or commitment. Is he would sign tomorrow morning, um, we would submit it in the grants um tomorrow afternoon. Um, he will also sign three other pieces of the grants that are basically saying, we will abide by the constraints of the grants and and basically some of these other pieces. Um, at the February fifteenth meeting. Depending on town manager's decisions, we would then say, okay, now we're going to have a resolution that formalizes this, but also maybe change that signature authority to. Town manager, um, timing wise, it makes more sense to have Philip as the signature authority. Does that, are there any questions on that? I just threw a lot of stuff at you.
So, so if we don't do it tonight. It will be delayed another month.
Correct, as far as consideration by by DOLA. And so DOLA, basically, they they will consider everything submitted within one month. In the following month, um, they have a hundred and forty three million dollars right now, according to the projects that have been submitted. In the January, that are being considered for January, um, a hundred and forty eight of was asked. Um, they're still considering more projects and they're trying to figure out what's who's worthy and such, um, but these are the same folks that. Granted us the money to buy Victoria Village the land, um, so we'll have a land commitment, we'll have potential PIF and fee waivers. Um, potential building use tax dollars, that kind of stuff, but those are things that we were already considering in order to make. Bring the price of it overall down, so.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve revolution, one minute, one three oh one four. Letter commitment to bring applications.
Are you kidding, that not up on the mic, cancel that? Did you hear that?
Oh, I don't know the, I heard you, but do you want to say it again since you weren't on the mic?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three oh one oh four. For a letter, letter of commitment to bring application for affordable housing.
All second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, I guess. Okay, all right, we're back to it.
I I feel like we're about to do a term paper.
Save a few times wanting to do in that, that's always my fear, right? The end of the thing and.
The neighborly software updates and.
That's it.
It turns quite a bit, and so if you're not getting saved, I'm not doing that.
Okay. All in favor? I'm sure, yeah.